Okay, may I welcome members and the viewing public to the meeting of the City Council. Can I ask the General Counsel, David Hollis, to announce the housekeeper arrangements, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Can I have your attention whilst I make a few housekeeping announcements? Please can I request members of the public to familiarise themselves with the fire safety and evacuation notices that are displayed in the public gallery? In the event of the fire alarm sounding, please take instructions from the security attendants who will be in attendance throughout the meeting. Please can I request everyone to switch mobile devices to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? The meeting today will be webcast and the recording will also be available for people to view later through the council's website. It is also possible that Sheffield Live TV will record and rebroadcast this meeting. Photography, video and sound recording of the meeting is permitted, but the Lord Mayor does not, does have discretion to withdraw or suspend this permission if the recording is disrupting the conduct of the meeting or is being undertaken in a manner which could capture personal information, or if a member of the public participates in objects to be recorded. Any member of the public due to speak at the meeting who does not wish to be recorded should say so at the start of their speech, and the Lord Mayor will suspend the permission to record their contribution. For safety reasons, please may I request that recording equipment is not held over the balcony. Finally, although there are no longer any specific Covid safety measures to adhere to, individuals are very welcome to wear a face covering within the chamber. Thank you.
Thank you, David. I shall conclude these housekeeping arrangements by stating that this meeting is scheduled to finish at 5.30pm, but I shall adjourn the meeting at an appropriate point in the proceedings to give members the opportunity to take a comfort break. Item two on the agenda is apologies for absence. Can I have the list of apologies? I have had apologies from Ian Orton, Lewis Chin Chin, Curtis Crossland, Christine Gilligan-Cubo, Toby Malinson, Henry Notte, Marouf Rauf, Sophie Thornton, Vicky Priestley, Sophie Wilson, Paul Wood and Maliki Haby. Are there any further apologies?
And councillor Nabila... Milana, sorry. She's got Covid.
Okay, thank you very much. Can we add that one to the list, please? No other apologies for absence. Item three on the agenda is exclusion of the present public. There are no items of business on the agenda for the meeting where resolutions may be moved to exclude the present public. Item four on the agenda is declarations of interest. This item of business is to enable members of the council to declare an interest in any item on the agenda. Does any member wish to declare an interest? I take that that there are no declarations of interest. Thank you. Item five on the agenda, public questions and petitions and other communications. First item is a couple of announcements from me. I've been given notice that the council has received notification that seven councillors have resigned from the Labour Group on Sheffield City Council and intend to form a new political group. There are no immediate implications for the meeting today other than those councils are now sitting in different places. The council must consider proportionality implications for the membership of its committees and subcommittees as soon as practicable, and it is expected that this will be done at its meeting in November. In the meantime, unless changes are made today during item 12 on the agenda, which is our normal change of the committees and memberships, there'll be no further changes until the full council next meets. That was just a clarification of those.
Lord Mayor?
Yes, councillor Orton?
Could I ask, you were standing orders that the representation is moved up the agenda after public questions, because it may be something of interest that members of the public want to listen to. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
That's agreed. Okay, let me take item 12 on the agenda, which is changes to committees. Can somebody pass me the relevant piece of paper, please? Thank you. It is to be moved by councillor Shaun O'Meara Richards, seconded by councillor Jordan that approval be given...
Sorry, Lord Mayor, I'm not going to second this.
Sorry, we changed that, was councillor Milton is going to second it. Yeah. And the membership of the committees and other council bodies and the appointment of representatives to serve on external bodies and related issues as detailed in the schedule at this meeting. Councillor Richards?
Formally moved, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Milton?
Formally seconded, Lord Mayor.
Okay. I am now...
Councillor Orton? Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm slightly puzzled by the proposed change to the representation of the Fire Authority in that, I understand this is, that positions of the Fire Authority are based on proportionality calculations across the whole of South Yorkshire. Whenever the AGM comes round, it seems to take a couple of weeks for those calculations to be done, and I'm always asking, how many places do we have in each joint authority? And we never get the answer until a day or two before the AGM, which is always, you know, it causes practical problems for our group in terms of choosing our people. But we seem to have got those sums done within the matter of a couple of hours in order to take one of the independent members off the Fire Authority, and yet we don't and can't practically process, do all the proportionality calculations to make all the changes, which obviously some will benefit the independents and some will lose. So it does seem to be disproportionate to do half of the job, to take positions away from a group of councillors without doing the whole job, which involves obviously taking some positions away and giving other positions. So I would suggest that today we don't approve these changes. Thank you.
We're clearly moving to slightly difficult territory here with the changes. Councillor Richards, I've got you indicating, and then if an officer then can give some legal advice on the way this proportionality has been calculated. Councillor Richards?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. This change was made when the person who is now a member of an independent group was indeed a member of the Labour Group, and I phoned that person to explain that I would be removing him and replacing him. Subsequently, I have discussed with Legal this morning, and there is no grouping yet which makes any difference to the South Yorkshire proportionality, because any independent grouping here is not, for instance, Joe, if you want me to answer. Thank you. If, for instance, there were an independent group on another authority, they are not the same independent group to be joined together. So therefore, I've had the advice from Legal, which I did check this morning, that it makes no difference and the proportionality means that it is a Labour seat, and that is why we are proposing a Labour member.
Thank you. Now, seeing that you want to speak, just for clarification, as what I said in my opening remarks to this, there isn't as yet constituted an independent group on this council. There are a number of independent councillors. Councillor Johnson?
Yes, thank you. I think councillor Orton might be jumping ahead into doing the maths. To the best of my knowledge, no maths have been done, either by councillor Orton or anyone else. Our group's discussed this, and we're not minded to support removing councillor Dams from the Fire Authority at this juncture in time. We think that, given that we've heard a statement that all this should be addressed in due course, and when everyone's had a chance to look up the calculations and the papers, we think it should be dealt with in November, it's a decision of the full council, and whilst I'm pretty sure what advice from officers might be in due course when we've had time to check that, and I'm certainly sure that we'll also be wanting to see if that brings our group an extra place on the Fire Authority, then now's not time to do it. So as a vote of full council, I'm going to suggest that we support retaining the status quo, at least for the time being, and we'll keep Tony Dams on the Fire Authority. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Okay, I think the points have been made and positions have been made clear. I'm going to, not seeing any other speakers, I'm going to move to the vote on this.
Sorry, can I ask Lord Mayor, therefore, for a legal clarification?
Oh, sorry, I did say that. Thank you for... David?
Yeah, I think just to clarify things, Lord Mayor, this isn't jumping the gun, this isn't as a result of the changes that have arisen because of the information that has been provided about members resigning from the Labour Group. This is a, the place on the South Yorkshire Fire and Rescue Authority is based upon current proportionality. The council will not be considering the implications of the members resigning and the potential for a new group until we get to the November full council. So this is an existing position based upon the existing proportionality, which, as others have said, is notified to us by Barnsley, because this is a South Yorkshire proportionality. So under the current information that we have and the current proportionality, this should be occupied by a member of the Labour Group. Councillor Dams is no longer a member of the Labour Group, and therefore that is why this has been put forward. It is ultimately a matter for council to vote, but it would mean that if we voted for this not to, that it wouldn't be in line with the proportionality as we're notified by South Yorkshire authorities. And that's the position on this one. So it's not jumping the gun, it's not assuming what the future proportions will be, it's based upon the existing.
Thank you, David. Given those, that advice and those positions, I am minded to move to the vote on this. And that will be done electronically? That will be done electronically unless there's unanimity, which I suspect there isn't. Is there any dissent to... Dissent? As I suspect it, we will vote electronically on it.
Lord Mayor, sorry, can I just clarify here? Are we voting to move this to November?
As I understand it, the proposal is, normally these committee changes go through just approved. What I'm having here is dissent, so I am suspecting that a number of people will vote against these committee changes, and then we'll see as a result of the revote whether they go through or not. And I also need clarification whether it is against both of the appointments, because there are two appointments on this schedule, the Fire and Rescue Authority and the changes to substitute members on the Wasten Street scene policy. Lord Mayor? Shaun, can you wait a minute, please?
I'm waiting.
Okay, I have just been advised that Part A is really reporting back on some action that has already been taken and has happened, and I'm seeing nods there. So I am taking this for the clarity that the voting on this will just be Part One, Part B, the South Yorkshire Fire and Rescue. And that seems to be...
Lord Mayor, in which case I will withdraw this motion such that everything can be done in November.
Thank you, that is helpful. So there will be no voting at all on this, that these changes will be in November. Thank you. Right. I am going back now to Lord Mayor's communications, and the second part of it is to thank those people that sponsored me last time and made contributions to the St Luke's charity, and I did the sponsored walk a few weeks ago around there. So thank you for those. Those who couldn't manage the, to scan the QR code, I'm making things easy for you, because where's Julie gone with the bucket? But there was, oh, the bucket is over there somewhere to catch you on the way out. Thank you. I know I caught you on the way into the town hall the other week, so... And, and thank you. But also, on the same theme, councillor Dale, have you come down to earth yet from absailing off, we couldn't decide from the pictures which building you abseiled off?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Yes, I'd like to thank everyone as well who sponsored me to abseil down the Owen Building in the city centre, I did it on Saturday for St Luke's as well, so thank you everyone.
Yeah, that's the reason why it's St Luke's. So good causes there. Gary's just trying to nick the bucket, but we'll just watch, we'll keep an eye on him there, so... Well, I was going to say, over there catches everybody on the way out, councillor Wetherell, that's the idea, but there we go. Okay. Sorry, right, back to the serio, well, that was serious, but back to the issues in hand. Public questions and petitions. Public questions and petitions can be asked and presented at council meetings. We encourage questions or petitions to be submitted two clear days in advance of the meeting to help public attendance to be managed in a safe way at the meeting and to assist members to provide responses or answers. Petitions or questions received after the submission deadline shall be presented or asked at the meeting at my discretion as Chair of the meeting. For this meeting, there are no petitions to be presented, and we have questions to be taken from seven members of the public. A period of 60 minutes is allowed in total for the ordinary questions, petitions and questions, and therefore we will start the timing on that now. May I remind people that questions from the public should be as brief as possible when asking the questions, and importantly, that members keep their responses short and to the point as well. This is to ensure that as much time as possible is available for the, for other items of business on the agenda. Thank you in advance for your cooperation. Okay, the first questioner I have is Sue Owen. If you could move to the microphone and ask your question.
Okay. I'm asking this question on behalf of Sheffield Campaign for Divestment from Companies that are Complicit with Human Rights Abuses in Palestine, which is part of the Sheffield Anti-Israeli Apartheid Coalition. The question, the Labour Party has sought legal advice on the economic activity of public bodies overseas matters bill, and Richard Kermer, KC, has concluded the implications for local democracy, for the proud history in our regions of campaigning for global human rights, for using our economic clout for the promotion of human rights, for free speech in this country, and for compliance with our international law obligations are potentially profound. In the light of the damage to local democracy that this bill would introduce, and to protect local democracy on behalf of Sheffield people, I would expect Sheffield Council to oppose this bill. Has Sheffield Council written a response to the consultation about the bill, and if yes, will you publish the response?
Thank you, thank you for your question. Can I ask the leader of the council, councillor Hunt, to respond?
Thank you very much for your question. Sheffield City Council doesn't have a position on the bill, individual members may. The bill is not yet on the statute book, and it's currently being debated by parliamentarians. At the second reading of the bill in July, my party did not support the bill. It's now at the committee stage before a third reading in the House of Commons and votes at further stages in the law. You've referred to my party in your question, and we're clear that all public bodies must act without bias or selectivity when making ethical decisions on procurement and investment. However, we are concerned that the bill risks significantly undermining support for groups around the world who face persecution, for example, the Uyghur population. We've asked the government to bring forward alternative proposals, because the bill in its current form places unprecedented restrictions on the ability of public bodies to express a view on policy. It's got potential widespread and significant negative impacts on local government pension funds, and it is likely to be subject to repeated and extended legal challenge. So it's still being debated in Parliament, but that's the position that my party is taking, other people may take other views, but we will see where this bill ends up. Thank you for your question.
Thank you, thank you, we allow, excuse me, excuse me, I am speaking. Will you please not persist and sit down? Can I make it clear? We allow public questions and an answer, and it isn't a forum for debate, and I hope all members of the public and members of the council will respect that position. I'm now moving to the second question from Dylan Lewis-Cresser.
Thank you, councillors. So we know that, oh, that's a bit too loud, sorry. We know that areas in the city that have lower car usage and are less, have less mobility options are the areas that most benefit from active travel schemes. Currently, the active travel schemes in our city have been disproportionately geared towards the middle-class areas of Crooks and Walkley, as well as other areas, particularly along the Shif Valley cycle room. While we welcome these, we need to recognise the huge benefits to economic and social mobility that this would bring. So what are the council doing to ensure that the benefits of active travel neighbourhoods are spread across the city, especially in the areas in need of social uplift?
Thank you. I refer this question to councillor Ben Miskel, Chair of the Transport, Regeneration and Climate Policy Committee.
Thank you, Dylan. The council's transport strategy promotes local transport policies that are intended to promote and provide safe and attractive travel choices for all, with a specific policy to enhance our multimodal transport systems, which encourage sustainable travel choices, particularly for active travel. We'll continue to include those schemes when we, as part of our aims for funding bid. This week is the Conservative Party conference, and there's been an awful lot of hot air around active travel. I think that this is particularly unhelpful. For me, active travel is about enhancing travel choices for people in how they move around our city. That is what I am determined to do, and it's important to say that Sheffield, of course, has been delivering many of these schemes for many years, and has been introducing active travel neighbourhoods for years, with one of the first, of course, it being in Boom Hall. Ultimately, we want to see more sustainable interconnected communities throughout Sheffield, and our future transport strategy that's due early next year and the ongoing development of the local plan will play a massive part in helping us to achieve this. Thank you.
Thank you. Third question, Christina Rees.
Good afternoon, everyone. My question concerns the council's plan to reopen Archer Lane. I live on Nether Edge Road a minute or so away. I would like to know what the council is planning to put in place to ensure that children walking to school who use the route along Nether Edge Road and Archer Lane can do so safely. We've done some head counts, it's a considerable number. I was dismayed to find there appears to be no mention of this in the report. For over a year, the closure of Archer Lane has created a wonderful way for children of all ages to reach their schools safely. Five schools, Holt House, Cardinal, Mercier, High Stores, and children on their way down to catch a bus to King Edward's, so five schools at least are involved. If Archer Lane reopens, there will be no time for children to adjust and learn the extremely hazardous crossings at every junction. Floodgates open once again, and these traffic conditions will be much worse than previously, as Mercier now has its full quota of students, or so I thought, but actually, a couple of days ago, I emailed Mercier, who say they now have 900 students, but by 2026, they're hoping to have 1,200 students. So I feel this is a real concern. Thank you.
Again, I'm referring the question to councillor Ben Miskel.
Thank you for your question, Christina. Road safety, of course, is a clear priority for us, and we'll be retaining the pedestrian crossings that were introduced in Nether Edge as part of the trial. The additional crossings have been welcomed, and many have stated that they have improved their journeys on foot. When people in Nether Edge were asked about the perceived impact on the safety of walkers and cyclists of the active travel measures, more responses said that they had had a negative impact on people's perception of safety of walkers and cyclists. The report outlines that the information available to date does not suggest that the Nether Edge Active Travel Neighbourhood Project has had a significant impact on personal injury collisions, all but one of the pedestrian or cyclist casualties on Abbeydale Road and not Archer Lane. Thank you very much for bringing your question today.
And the fourth question is from Simon Sylvester.
Good afternoon. Being a resident of Archer Lane, I have experienced at first hand the provocative political campaigning regarding the Nether Edge Active Travel Neighbourhood. Following the decision made by the Transport, Regeneration and Climate Policy Committee to reopen Archer Lane, I viewed the webcast of the committee meeting. In their deliberations concerning the Nether Edge Active Travel Neighbourhood, councillors make hardly any reference to the research commissioned by their own committee. Few members take up the opportunity for debate during proceedings, and it appears that private email messages received by councillors and feedback from party colleagues all have greater influence than commissioned research. Would you agree that the final decision to reopen Archer Lane was informed more by undisclosed party interests than by presented evidence or informed debate?
Again, I'll refer the question to councillor Ben Miskel.
Thank you very much, Mr Sylvester, for your question. I'm glad that you were able to watch the live stream of the robust debate and discussions that happened at the Transport, Regeneration and Climate Committee recently on this issue. The ETRO allowed a range of measures to be trialled within the Nether Edge Active Travel Neighbourhood area, and in making a decision, members will, of course, or did, of course, take into account officer advice provided through reports, in addition to important community voices, including conversations with constituents and through their members' correspondence. And it's only right and proper that they do that as elected representatives. Listening to and balancing the comments of impacted residents, members concluded that two elements of the scheme in Nether Edge and Charrow were to be made permanent, and the trial closure of Archer Lane was not to be carried forward. As part of the trial of the closure of Archer Lane, we received a range of views from residents and businesses... and businesses in Nether Edge. And whilst there were comments that highlighted the positive experience, there were many people who provided us with their negative experiences of the trial who asked the council not to make the trial closure permanent. In direct response to Mr Sylvester's question, the Transport Regeneration and Climate Committee does carefully consider the feedback we receive before taking our decision and did so in order to end the trial closure. The report to the Transport Regeneration and Climate Committee does indicate that whilst a road casualty trend cannot be established based upon just seven months of data, the information available to date does not suggest that Nether Edge as an active neighbourhood project has had that significant impact on personal injury collisions. I think it's also important to say that when people in Nether Edge were asked about their perceived impact to the safety for walkers and cyclists, their responses were really quite varied. More responses said that there had been a negative impact on people's perception of safety walkers and cyclists. Now, it's really important, as we said to the previous question, that the road safety is a clear priority for the committee and we'll be retaining those pedestrian crossings that were introduced in Nether Edge as part of that trial. And we know that they've had a significant impact on people in the area and the majority of people did welcome their introduction. And people have said to us that they've improved their journeys on foot, with a number of people specifically mentioning that they've improved the safety of routes to local schools. So thank you very much for your question.
Thank you. We now move on to the next question, some different topic this time, from Lee Parkinson.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Lee Parkinson, G M B Trades Union Officer for North East Yorkshire and Humber. Councillors, you will be aware that G M B have launched an equal pay campaign in Sheffield. We note that the deputy leader has suggested women who think they may be discriminated against ask for a regrade. Does the council leader believe it is the responsibility of individual women to resolve pay discrimination or the job of the council leadership to ensure that Sheffield is operating a fair, transparent job evaluation scheme? When will the leader commit to scrapping the rotten allocation scheme that is discriminating against thousands of Sheffield women?
I'm referring that question to the leader of the council, councillor Tom Hunt.
Thank you very much, Lee, for your questions. We always welcome dialogue with colleagues from G M B and other unions who represent our workforce here at the council. That's why when the concerns from G M B about equal pay here were raised by yourselves last week, councillor Belvin and I met with representatives, two of your colleagues from G M B, on the same day that they were raised with us because we know that this is a serious concern that you've raised. Following that meeting, as you know, we asked for further information and thank you, you sent that over to us yesterday. We'll now be reviewing that, as you'd expect, because this is a serious matter. Equal pay is a right both morally and legally and if the council finds any issues, we will, of course, address them. We'll do this in partnership with unions and with staff and we'll take advice where we need to. In the meantime, we know that our staff will have queries and some concerns about this and they may want to discuss them. So we've set up a direct email route for any staff who are in this position to get in touch with colleagues here. Officers have shared this information in the all-staff briefing that goes out to all colleagues and in staff newsletters. We'll continue to encourage all members of staff who may have queries or concerns to get in touch with with HR or their representatives so that they can be addressed. Pay, policy, job evaluation, grading and equal pay are a set of complex issues that we will be looking at now. We will review our practice, we will take appropriate advice. We have a joint union, elected members and management meeting tomorrow where colleagues from your union will be present and we'll be looking forward to discussing all of this in more detail then and with yourselves at G M B. Thank you.
Okay, the next question is from Russell Johnson. Mr Johnson, you've got five lengthy questions on different topics. I suggest we take them one at a time.
Good afternoon, Lord Mayor. Allowed today, this microphone. Officers, members, thank you for allowing me this opportunity. Just as a quick preface, may I wish councillor Hunt the best of luck in dealing with the wreckage of the Labour Party following this morning's revelations? And one further point, may I recommend to the entire gathering here that you view the excellent Channel Four drama documentary called Partagate?
Mr Johnson, I think we had the opportunity to view that last night. Do you want to just get on with your questions, please?
Yes, I think people here know why I think it's essential viewing, actually. Okay, as you said, Lord Mayor, there are five questions, but each, I don't think they're particularly lengthy by council standards, but they are on different topics, so I trust that people here will find them interesting at least. Okay, the first one is about the plaque. Now, for those who don't know, at a previous meeting, the council agreed that there shall be a celebratory plaque placed in the lobby of the town hall, celebrating the victory of the tree campaigners against this council. Okay, so that's a very small but welcome expression of remorse and that's fantastic. However, the possible cost, estimated cost in a previous council paper was around £10,000. It seems strange, to say the least. It seems, no, not strange, preposterous actually is the word I would choose, particularly in view of the powerless financial position that this council found itself in, partly, of course, due to the issue raised by our G M B friend here a moment ago. Question A, what is the council's procurement procedure for the plaque? How is that progressing? Would the leader appreciate details of a suitable plaque that I have located for £18.99? I think it might do the job. I can share details with Tom if that's helpful. And finally, I mean, you know, we'll get the idea. Will the council commit to consultation on the proposed wording of the plaque with interested parties and not just with the few selected people who choose to describe themselves as reps with whom the council has dealt in the past? Thank you. That's question one. You said treat it separately.
Exactly, exactly. Councillor Hunt is going to respond to your questions and to the first one, please.
I'd be glad to. Hello, Mr Johnson, good to see you. Enjoyed our cup of tea back in the summer. On the questions around the plaque, the June report to Strategy and Resources Committee, which outlined the council's responses to the Lowcoff report, which I know you've read, gave an up to figure encompassing all potential related costs for the plaque. This was done so that if any unexpected factors arose, which is possible when we're dealing with a Grade One historic listed building, we would have the financial sign-off to deal with them and be able to keep to schedule. We're keen that the plaque is made in Sheffield. We're a city of makers, creators, innovators with fantastic craft people working here. So we're keen to make sure it's made in Sheffield so that we use a local supplier and we're proposing to use one in particular who manufactures the Legends of Sheffield Plaques, which you've probably seen and walked over in the pavement and the front of the town hall. We want to ensure that the quality of the Street Tree plaque is of an appropriate standard alongside other plaques that are present in this building. As we develop the design and we consult on the wording, we're confident that the cost will be much less than the £10,000 upper limit that was allocated for. The design process will involve asking the public for their views of potential designs. Work is on track to deliver the plaque in line for a public unveiling as agreed in March 2024. It's going to sit alongside the Kinderscout plaque, the Mass Trespasser plaque, in the public entrance to this Grade One listed building. Good craftsmanship, I'm sure you will agree, does cost money and I do appreciate the offer and I would welcome you to send me the details of that, but I do think that it's perhaps unlikely that a lower cost plaque would be, would meet the criteria that I and you and the people of Sheffield would want for a plaque of such significance in a building of such significance. Nonetheless, please do send me the details.
Okay, can I answer question two now, please?
Thank you, Tom, that was very clear. Okay, question two, the subject is the Fargate Container scandal. The internal audit report, January 23, concerning this was due in the first quarter of this financial year. Question A, when will the internal audit report on that saga be made available? B, when it is published, are disciplinary actions against incompetent or inadequate officers a possible or likely outcome? Is action against relevant members for inadequate oversight a possibility? Will any appropriate sanctions that are applied be announced, anonymously, of course, if there appears to have been misfeasance, will action be taken? Finally, on this section, how likely is clawback of the Get Building Fund of the approximately half a million pounds in total wasted on this bizarre debacle? Has this been adjutant for? Thank you.
Councillor Hunt.
Thank you. The council will be publishing the outcomes of the audit ahead of a forthcoming Audit Committee meeting. That's a matter for the Audit Committee to decide when that is coming forward. That committee will monitor the actions and recommendations arising from it. The council doesn't comment, as I'm sure you would agree is appropriate, on individual HR matters or processes if they arise. There's been no clawback claimed and there's no specific budget identified for any.
Thank you, councillor Hunt. Okay. Three is about formal complaints to this council. Following Lowcoff and also the introduction of the modern committee system, the excited Sheffield public, and I am one of those, expected to feel the breath of fresh air blowing through the fetid corridors of this town hall. One improvement promised was proper and timely dealing with complaints. Once again, optimists' hopes have been dashed. For example, and I won't make it obviously refer to any specific complaints, that wouldn't be appropriate, I'm aware of a complaint against the council outstanding from April 2021, yes, and one from May 2023 that has not even been acknowledged. I also know of a complaint regarding members' breaches of their code of conduct, which dates from April this year and is not properly being dealt with in a timely manner. A, would the leader please explain the clear failings in handling of complaints despite reassurances that things would change? Is he being distracted by the schism in the Labour Party? B. Would the leader commit? Quiet in the public gallery, please. Would the leader commit to addressing effectively the continuing dysfunction regarding complaints and related but not the same issue speeding up freedom of information processing? Thank you.
Councillor Hunt.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, thank you, Mr Johnson. I am fully focused on improving the council's performance to make sure that we can be the best council we can be. If there are any shortcomings and delays in responding to you or other people that you are aware of, please let me know and I will take them up. But I appreciate the issues that you raise are bigger than just a few examples. A full review of our systems and process for responding to freedom of information requests and subject access requests is underway. This includes looking at the underpinning IT systems that are being used to track them. We will continue to publish our performance and report improvements to the Audit Committee.
Thank you for that. Not really concise. Okay, question four, we're nearly there, folks. The Rose Garden Cafe fiasco is the subject of this one. Okay, I welcome the possibilities for community council joint working recently announced. However, question A, could the leader explain why it has taken 19 months to reach a possible solution, which has been clear to those of us following this issue for a long, long time? B, does the leader agree with me that too often elected members fail to robustly question poor advice from offices? And this appears to have been the case in this unfortunate saga. Finally, in this, what is the explanation for the obviously ridiculous S C C costing of restoring the cafe to full use? This can be compared very easily to an independent costing and it is quite correctly bonkers. Will there be any investigation of the apparent deception appearing to promote a particular and destructive agenda against the expressed public interest of those concerned with the Rose Garden Cafe? Thank you.
Councillor Hunt again.
Thank you. Thank you, Lord Mayor, thank you, Mr Johnson. A stage one feasibility study has been undertaken to understand options for the future of the Rose Garden Cafe, including initial costings and anticipated works. The cost information that's been provided is only for feasibility and assumptions have been made. These are listed in the Options Appraisal Cost Report on the Rose Garden Cafe page of the council's website where all of this is available. So we're being open and transparent about what is up there. The feasibility study was informed by commissioned surveys that took place in the building, which were required to understand the extent of the structural works required and any potential solutions. All options have been appraised in further detail, considering a range of different factors. The outcome of this detailed exercise, which has taken some time, will be presented to the Extraordinary Charity Subcommittee Meeting this month on the 18th of October. At all times, we're working in the public interest. We have ensured that the Options Appraisal, although initial feasibility, has been undertaken in significant detail to ensure that the recommendations meet with charitable objectives and that they're viable.
Thank you. Final question.
Yes, thank you, councillor Hunt. I shall be there at that meeting and with interest, of course. Okay, finally, a nice short one, thank you all for bearing with me and these several questions. Final one heading is Personal Apologies arising out of Lowcoff. A, please would the leader attempt to explain the increased rigidity demonstrated by the council in refusing to accept victims' reasonable wishes in respect of their apologies, which were, of course, billed as personal, i.e. tailored? B, does the leader accept that the current doubling down is not in the spirit of the remorse and desire for change embodied in the lengthy and remarkable public apology issued in June of this year by the chief executive and himself? And finally, will he recommit to honesty, openness and a sensitive approach to the victims of councils' egregious behaviours? Thank you.
Thank you. I'm councillor Hunt again.
Thank you, Mr Johnson. In the report that I mentioned earlier on that accompanied the council's public apology for the Street Trees dispute, which went to the Strategy and Resources Committee back in June, we set out a very clear process for individuals who had suffered harm during the dispute to request personal apologies from the council for our actions during the time of that dispute. We agreed to do this in recognition of the range of harms that were caused to people who were involved in the dispute and the Lowcoff report goes into some detail about that. So that we were able to then look people in the eye and apologise for the council's role in that. That process is set out in detail in an annex of that report, which I know you've had a look at. The process was designed in such a way so as to allow the individual wishes and circumstances of the individuals requesting apologies to be taken into account. These included the option for the individual to be provided with their apology either verbally or in writing, to set out any specific issues that they're seeking apology for and to suggest who made that apology. That's the process that we're following and we haven't deviated from that process. Our commitment as a council to the recommendations set out in the Lowcoff report, my commitment as council leader to the recommendations set out in the Lowcoff report remains wholehearted. Progress is being made across a range of different actions that were outlined in that report, including on the individual apology process. We'll be reporting back to a meeting of the Strategy and Resources Committee in coming months to be open and transparent about the way in which those recommendations are being met and I'm sure you'll be there.
Thank you, councillor Hunt. Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you, thank you. Final question is from Eileen Howarth, who I don't think is in attendance. Can I just check that?
in attendance. Can I just check that? This was a question about progress or the lack of progress on the Rose Cafe in Grace Park. Can I ensure that she receives a written response to that question and it was directed at you, Counselor Hunt? Thank you. That concludes that item of business. Therefore, we move on to item six on the agenda, which is Members' Questions. There's a maximum time limit, thirty minutes for this. I've been given notice and I've accepted an urgent question from Counselor Mike Chaplin to Counselor Ben Miskell, Chair of the Transport Committee, and this is because of announcements from the Prime Minister this morning about the cancellation of HS2 and several other transport projects which have an impact on Sheffield. Counselor Chaplin to ask the question, Counselor Miskell will be confining his answer to a factual response where it relates to Sheffield in particular. Counselor Chaplin.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. The question is, considering the Prime Minister's announcement earlier today about the cancellation of HS2 and announcements on several other transport projects, what will be the impact on Sheffield?
Counselor Miskell.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, for allowing me to answer Counselor Chaplin's question. I'm mindful of the guidance that you've given to keep my answer succinct and provide a really factual update. In doing this, I'm sure that there's also going to be more of an opportunity for further comment over the coming hours and days. Members will be aware that Prime Minister delivered his conference speech in Manchester a few hours ago, and given the speculation, it's no surprise that he cancelled the northern leg of HS2. This follows on from the previous announcement that the government made to axe the eastern leg that would have seen much benefit to Sheffield and our wider region. In turning on our TV screens this morning, most of us in this chamber will have agreed with South Yorkshire's Mayor Oliver Copard, who said that this was a catastrophe for the country at a time when our eyes need to be firmly set on delivering the sort of economic growth that's needed to change lives in this city. In pulling the funding for HS2, the Prime Minister's today announced what he is calling the North Network North. As far as we can see, this is predominantly a collection of transport schemes that were already in progress or that local authorities like ours had been working on for many years. We will, of course, be aware of the detail of those, but members will have seen the announcement about the Donlet Valley Line. We welcome the government getting on board with our plans to deliver the reopening of passenger services to Stockbridge, Deepcar and Utterbridge, but it's important to say that members will recall that we've been calling for government to work with us for many years on this. Announcements at conferences, of course, very easy, but we want to see real commitment to deliver tram train on that line, connecting it to an expanded tram network as well as the vision, to see it as a single project alongside the Barrow Hill Line, which would open tram train stops in Darnall, Woodhouse and Beton. This would help to better connect our communities and will be part of our updated transport vision for the city. We've also seen announcements about services to Manchester and the Hope Valley Line, a project which Network Rail started two years ago. Members will be aware that this city recently lost its direct train service to Manchester Airport, which is something that we're determined to see reintroduced. We hope that the government will work with us and South Yorkshire's Mayor Oliver Copard to improve this vital connectivity link between our two great northern cities. And, Lord Mayor, I will look forward to updating members in the future, but it would be really remiss of me not to note the frustrations that are articulated in town halls throughout the north, that government is opting to make announcements from the conference pulpit instead of genuinely working collaboratively with northern leaders to deliver infrastructure projects that will allow us to genuinely level up the north.
Thank you, Counselor Miskell, and I'm sure that the debate about transport links will continue for many months, indeed years, to come. Okay, we now move on to questions on the Joint Authorities. This item of business is to provide an opportunity for members of the council to ask questions on the discharge of the funds of the South Yorkshire Joint Authorities for Fire and Rescue and Pensions and of the South Yorkshire Merrill Combined Authority. Are there any questions relating to these authorities? I see no indication, therefore we will move on to written supplementary questions. Written answers from the leader of the council and policy committee and subcommittee chairs to questions submitted by members in advance of the meeting have been emailed to all members and circulated at the meeting. This item of business is to provide an opportunity for members who have submitted a question to ask one supplementary question for each question asked. And I will go through these page by page. So on page one, Counselor Mahart.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you, Counselor Hunt, for your answer around the vote that took place last month. My supplementary question to you is, Counselor Hunt, that I have disappointingly learnt recently that some of the members of the Labour Party were bullied and harassed by people linked to the Labour Party to ensure that they did not vote against the local plan. So my question to you is, what do you intend to do to take this issue up, given that bullying and harassment is a huge issue, and I'm sure most people in Sheffield will condemn it? So what you as leader of the Labour Party here in Sheffield are going to do about it?
Counselor Hunt. If any issues of bullying and harassment are raised with me pertaining to the Labour group, then I would take them up, as you would expect me to do so. So it is important that all of us in this chamber conduct ourselves with civility and respect towards colleagues, and if there's evidence to the contrary, then I would take that forward. My colleague, Counselor Belbin, sent around to all members recently a link to the LGA's Debate Not Hate campaign, which is about encouraging us to have mutual respect across chambers so that we are treating each other with respect and patience and care. If there is evidence to the contrary of that, I would take that up.
Thank you. Page two, page three, Counselor Masters.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you for your response, Counselor Hunt. But basically, your answer to what is a public consultation, I think that's the heart of the matter. If you give people a voice and an opportunity to influence, but never let them take it up on that, that is key to the problem. It's a misuse of the word consultation. And with your permission, Lord Mayor, I'll continue because there are a few other comments, something else. Answers to the first four questions were all lumped together, and the answers for question five was put together, and really this covers all of them, if I may. So basically, sort of, you know, would you please redefine consultation so that it is meaningful to people? And the second thing is, looking at it, everything's very laudable, but there's no substance in how you are going to do this. And I think with all the failed consultations we've had very recently, not even mentioning the Lowcock report, then people want to know that you are changing, not just making the right noises. Thank you.
Counselor Hunt.
Thank you, Counselor Masters. I think my definition, as set out in the beginning of my answer there, of what public consultation is, is one that I stand by. I think there's an important point for us all to recognise, that when we go out to consult and do it well, that doesn't mean that you'll reach a place of consensus. I searched upon this in the local plan discussion one month ago. Our job is to take difficult decisions on behalf of this city. That will mean at times we may be at odds with people who have had the ability to speak up and an opportunity to influence decisions, but they may not ultimately agree with our decisions. So my position there on what public consultation is remains. I would say, if you want a specific, that I think there's very good practice taking place now with the development of the City Goals. The City Goals is a process where perhaps in the past, officers here with some members could have spent a couple of hours of an afternoon with a blank sheet of paper and come up with a draft set of City Goals and then gone out to consult on them. That hasn't happened in this case. The City Goals process, that consultation process, began with a set of questions asking people about their hopes, their aspirations, their fears for their children, their communities, their city. And from that, a set of City Goals are being drafted. I think there's a lot to learn from that process, where we're starting from a place of genuine listening without predetermined positions, and that's something that I think we can learn from and seek to embed in council consultation.
Thank you. Page four, page five, page six, page seven. Counselor Brit.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And thank you to Counselor Hunt for a very comprehensive answer to my question. A hundred million pounds worth of expenditure on consultants and agency staff, in anybody's language, is a horrendous figure for a local authority to be spending on third party people. I know there's a lot of questions I would like to ask, Lord Mayor, but I'm mindful I can only ask one question. And that one question from me would be, that obviously people in Sheffield will be concerned about this amount of expenditure to external sources. Do we have control of this figure? And if we don't have any control, are we putting any measures in place to control this figure, bearing in mind the enormity of this figure? Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Counselor Hunt.
Thank you. Yes, these are comprehensive and large figures. At times, we have to bring in expertise, technical advice, that perhaps we don't have in-house. And that's where consultants can provide a very good service to this council to help us in the work that we're doing. Where we may have gaps in our existing skills base, knowledge base in this council, I would say it's because we're not adequately resourced as a council and haven't been over the last thirteen years. We're going to have a long discussion, I expect, later on about council, local government finances, but it is the case that we have been systematically under-invested in by central government over the last thirteen years, which means that the headcount of this organisation has reduced, and therefore, at times, we do need to bring in external expertise to help us in the important work that we're doing. So we have a duty, as we now go into this budget setting process, to ensure that every pound of public money is spent wisely, and we set the budget for the coming years, and the medium-term financial assessment sets out this, as you know, prudently, transparently, and we'll do it on a cross-party basis. So every pound of public money needs to be spent wisely, and it's right that we scrutinise all costs. But these figures are looking back, and I think we need to be focused on the challenges going forward. Those challenges would be reduced if we had adequate funding from central government.
Thank you. I'm now on page eight. Yes, Alexi.
Thank you. So in your answer to my question, you said that the council doesn't have a position on the anti-democratic, anti-boycott bill. I'm just wondering if the council did make a submission to the government's consultation, which I think was in May, on this bill inviting local authorities to submit.
Counselor Hunt.
I do not believe that we did. I'm not so aware that we did, no.
Page nine, Counselor Hopsham.
Thank you. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
With the greatest respect, this is not a question to Counselor Martin Smith. It's a question to Counselor Tom Hunt, and I find it unfathomable that this question has been redirected to Counselor Martin Smith. Would you like to explain why, Counselor Hunt?
A range of questions, looking through this document, have been redirected to various committee chairs, where the issue that is being asked about falls under the responsibility of the relevant policy committee. And so tram lines and major events form part of the Economic Development and Skills portfolio, and therefore I understand that that's why it's been redirected to Counselor Martin Smith.
Counselor Hopsham, you've now got a question to Counselor Smith.
It's later in the document.
It's later in the document, okay. No, no, we'll do it in order of pages then. Depends on your colleagues in the chamber. Counselor Lodge.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Apologies for having to ask the questions in here. I've not had an opportunity for the last four weeks to ask them anywhere else. I'm somewhat surprised that the answer from the leader of the council to the question asking, what conversations has he been having with the Chair of the Housing Policy Committee regarding the stock increasing programme is directed to the Chair of the Housing. I was asking you what conversations you've had, because clearly there are some issues here around the stock increase programme in Sheffield, so it would seem appropriate that you are taking an interest and asking the Chair of the committee, not directing me to ask Counselor Johnson what he thinks you should have been asking him.
I suspect it's a similar answer to the previous question, Counselor Hunt.
I mean, Brian, it is. It's a question about the stock increase programme. Counselor Johnson and I have had conversations as part of discussions around the new housing strategy. Homes England came up to Sheffield a few weeks ago, and Counselor Johnson and I participated in the visit, and we were talking about how we can ensure that as part of the local plan, we do have the six new thousands, new homes built over the next fifteen years, and the stock increase programme does form part of that. On the substance of it, though, I'm content with Counselor Johnson asking that, because Counselor Johnson is Chair of the Housing Policy Committee.
Question ten. Oh, sorry, page ten.
Lord Mayor, thank you, thank you for that, Counselor Hunt. I mean, you could have just put that in there in the answer to the question, and it would have resolved that. Question two, again, you seem to have directed the answer to Counselor Johnson when I was asking, were you happy with the progress, visible progress, lack of visible progress towards achieving the three thousand one hundred homes? A note from a quote in the Star today, you talk about focused on getting new homes built, you talk about delivering an ambitious vision for the city, putting the people of Sheffield first, and people opposed to that, you know, that are not on side, you seem to be against. Well, far from not wanting to support this, I'm asking a question because I'd like to know what's going to happen and see what the commitment is to get the homes built in Burley Ward, in Newstead, where the residents have put up with demolition, they've put up with redevelopment, they've put up with being decanted from the homes. This is over twenty years that I've been on the council, that I came on the council fighting for this. They've then gone through with a huge hole in the ground that we spent millions on, which we are now covering over. And there is a desperate need for more affordable housing and council housing and older people independent living scheme that was planned on the site, which we're now talking of filling in, spending another eighteen months of disruption, and spending another one point two, one point four million. So again, the question is, are you happy with the progress that's been made towards getting the housing stock increased in line with the council's notice of motion that was agreed, the decision back in February that said to retain the figure of three thousand one hundred, but also go further still? Thank you, Lord Mayor. Just in some difficulty here, because just to make it clear to everybody, that it's now the answer to be provided by the Chair of the Housing Policy Committee, who was Johnson, which is further on in the agenda. In view of the fact you've asked this question, jumping ahead, I'll allow it in this case of Counselor Johnson to answer that now. Lord Mayor, if I may, I was just asking if Counselor Hunt is happy with the lack of progress. I wasn't asking Counselor Johnson. I was asking Counselor Hunt if he is happy with the lack of visible progress. the lack of visible progress.
For whatever reason, the count, the detailed answer is to be provided by the chair of housing and it was on the progress of housing issues, so I'm going to ask councillor Johnson to answer. That's my ruling.
Well, Lord Mayor, I completely take councillor Lodge's point in this case. He was, um, um, a question asking about the personal views of councillor Hunt. Actually, I don't know. What are you thinking, Tom? On, on the, on the serious point, I mean, um, you know, I'm just saying from my point of view, you've got my answer on, uh, page twenty to your question, which you've seen set out there. I'm just going to say from my point of view as chair of housing, all of us on the housing committee want to see as many council houses built as possible. As we all know, it's incredibly challenging moment, we still got the same amount of money there, but, um, you, it's, the house money doesn't go as far enough. Um, it's always the way when you want to get builders in, it always takes a lot longer to get something done than you really want. Uh, in this case, we're struggling to even get the builders in. Um, and obviously that's the case with Newstead estates that you mentioned there, there's a proposal for that, but it is just a bit about keeping it on hold. And appreciate that's unsatisfactory as it is all over the city. Um, that's, that's where we are. Um, you, you've seen on there, of course, also that, um, the fact the money doesn't go as far as it ought to have done means that, you know, we all had to vote to reduce the number of houses that we expect to be able to build. Um, you and I both voted for that, as it says there. Um, this is how it is. Um, but, but the question, the question is, as, the question is, as you asked, whether the leader's happy with that. I'm sure he'll tell us in due course.
Lord Mayor, let me just.
Uh, I'm now moving on to page eleven, page twelve, page thirteen, page fourteen. Councillor Homshaw. Can you say which question on page fourteen?
Yes, I'm sorry, uh, I've got lots of choices, haven't I? Uh, well, yes. Possibly three. Uh, so, uh, to question one, uh, thank you for your answer, Martin. Uh, but I disagree that this question should be answered by councillor Martin Smith when the question was asked or councillor Hunt. However, what I would like to ask is, um, the twenty eighteen contract, it seems to be, it seems to be a contract, uh, including a land agreement, which, uh, an agreement is a contract, um, when does that precisely finish? Which of course will depend on when it began, twenty eighteen, yes, but when does it precisely finish? So we acknowledge of that.
Thank you, councillor Homshaw. Can I start by agreeing with other councillors who've already spoken? I do think it's rather bizarre that as elected members, we are unable to ask the leader of the council what his opinion is on a particular subject and instead the questions are being redirected to others. It feels like we've gone into a parallel universe where something as basic as that to our democracy is not allowed to happen. So I agree with your previous comments on that, councillor Homshaw. In particular, regards to this question, you're effectively asking why councillor Hunt neglected to mention the exi- in, in the last council, the existence of this particular document. Now, I'm very happy to do that and I've given you a full answer on that. The date of expirancy, that when the, um, agreement expires, I don't know, but I'll find out for you. Um, I don't want to get into the niceties of what a contract is and what an agreement is. I think to the man on the street, the woman on the street, it's the same bloody thing and we shouldn't hide behind that. I'm very happy to answer any other questions you've got, uh, either here or in our committee meetings. But I do think that transferring questions around the council, particularly this one, you're basically following up a question that you asked somebody at the last council meeting. If it was a, if you were allowed to do that last time, why aren't you allowed to do that this time? Unless it's policy, or the questions have to be dodged. It, it's just, it's not right.
Thank you. Um, the, the, this is obviously clearly this redirection of questions, uh, has caused some issues and there was discussion about this in the pre-meeting and some discussion with officers about, well, the unsatisfactory nature and how it has led to the situations we've got here. And frankly, putting me in, some did agree as well. So I'm just going to ask the officers to set out the rationale for why this has happened this time and what is going to happen to try and prevent the same issues next time.
Thank you, councillor. Thank you, Lord Mayor. Yes, uh, the constitution is clear that questions to member, of members should be directed to policy committee chairs or the leader in their role as though, as policy committee chairs or in the role of leader as set out in the constitution. They are not designed to seek personal opinions and the constitution expressly states that. So we have therefore looked at these questions and have decided if they are about a policy committee, uh, a policy matter that falls within the remit of a policy committee, they should properly be directed to the relevant policy committee chair and not to the leader for, as a default matter. The process around that, we accept, needs to be improved so that they are clear where the questions are going to be. And we will be directing some further guidance to members about the process for members' questions in advance of the next meeting.
Thank you. We're now on to page fourteen, so have you got a subsequent question on question two or question three?
Yes, uh, question, uh, answer two.
Please stand.
Sorry?
Stand up.
Yeah, I'm about to. So, yes, I seem to be asking councillor Martin Smith an answer that I require from councillor Hunt. Do I actually have to keep asking councillor Martin Smith questions that are relevant to my questions to, uh, uh, councillor Hunt? Because this was not asking for a personal opinion from councillor Hunt, it was asking him to clarify what had been said previously by himself as a, as a genuine question at the last meeting.
Councillor Hunt has indicated he is prepared to answer this question.
Well, I, I think I just need to clarify the situation here. This is not something, I'm not trying to shed questions here, David has just set out the response to the question. I will take, you know, people can ask as many questions as they want, you know, we've got an hour or however, how long do we have for this section?
We've only got thirty minutes and we're running out of time now.
You go, you know, start your question scribbling for next time round and I'll take thirty minutes of questions if you would like, you know, I'm happy to take any questions. This one was, did not reach me, it has been, it's submitted by yourself and then sent over to councillor Martin Smith to answer, as I explained, because economic development and skills is the relevant policy committee which is looking after tram lines. My answer last time was about there not being a contract in place, tram lines is set out here, I agree with Martin Smith's answer, councillor Smith's answer, as a premises licence. So that is, you know, I think the discrepancy that you're talking about, but on the substantial point of whether I'm going to answer questions on behalf of members, absolutely, but it will be in line with what David has said, that they will be, uh, directed towards the relevant committee chair. That's myself. I'll take them all.
Okay, moving on, and I think we've got a straightforward one on question fifteen to the relevant chair. Yes. Oh, hang on, have we not finished? You've got question three, have you?
Question three, I've got answer three.
Lord Mayor, can I make a point of order?
Thank you.
Uh, what's the point of order?
Lord Mayor, myself, councillor Homshaw and councillor Smith all sit on the economic development and skills committee where we had a lengthy discussion and I, the agenda item on this at our last meeting. I think it would be more appropriate for councillor Homshaw to bring those questions to our committee.
Um, ah, the situation is that if you're on the policy committee, you shouldn't be asking questions, the chair of the policy committee, however, we've got the situation where you thought you were asking the questions of councillor Hunt, and now it's been redirected, which has led to the whole mess that we've got here. So this is, this is making it, it very difficult. Um, in view of the fact, councillor Homshaw, I'm going to make a ruling on the hoof here that I am going to actually move on because you've asked a few questions, we get into a mess here and I'd like other members to, to ask that. So you don't, yeah, I, I'm going to, I'm going to move on to question, to councillor Diamond's question.
I've already stood up and I would like to ask, if these procedures are happening, then why wasn't I included in any of the discussions of this? This is all kind of news to me.
Please respect me as Lord Mayor, making the decision in very difficult situations where it's complex and various things like that. Councillor Diamond.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. Um, I'd just like to ask him, are we confident that no children are sharing rooms with adults in Sheffield, adults who are strangers? Uh, have, have all assessments been carried out by two social workers and have interpreters always been provided and an appropriate adult always provided?
Thank you, councillor Diamond. Uh, I will get you a briefing if you'd like with the relevant officers that have answered these questions. So if you want to pop me an email over, we can have a joint briefing so you can ask those questions directly of officers. Is that okay? Thank you.
All right, we've just got a, a minute or so left. Um, page sixteen, page seventeen, eighteen, eight, nineteen, question nineteen, I think this is going to have to be the last question.
Thanks, Lord Mayor. Um, my question also relates to the issue about sending a, a question to Tom Hunt as chair of strategy resources because it's a question which overages a number of committees and I've now got three different committee answers come back and it's on the trees and woodland strategy, so perhaps, um, somebody could take up an answer on this. I have read the strategy and it is very much geared in the council's favour when it comes to dealing with private residents and damage to their property as a result of tree encroachment. And they are expected to actually produce technical evidence to support any issues that they are having with trees. I think this is a sledgehammer to crack a nut, uh, bearing in mind that should private trees or hedges encroach on council property, they can't, the private residents are expected to actually deal with it and make good. So can I ask, that there is a review of this policy to make it much more even in the way it approaches private residents, who a significant amount of casework we get on this about dealing with trees are either roots are disturbing land on their, in their gardens or overhanging branches which need to be removed that people in some cases can't afford to carry out any of this. So could I request an answer on this please? Thank you.
Councillor Johnson.
Uh, thanks, Lord Mayor. I'm willing to answer this because it's a, it's a sensible question, but I wouldn't want this council getting to a position where it's like trying to prove a negative, um, where householders feel they've got claims against the council for whatever basis. I think they do need to substantiate those and if that takes technical evidence, then that's how it is. Um, I'm thinking, so speaking as the chair of the housing committee, I'm sure there's lots of trees on housing land and it could encroach on properties that are now in private ownership through right to buy, but it could place a, a very undue burden on the housing revenue accounts, which of course our tenants pay for, um, if we're now in a situation having to prove a negative on almost every property across the city. So I, I just throw that, that warning there, hope that answers that question.
Thank you. Um, as we've reached the time of members' questions, I shall now move on to the next item of business with the caveat that let's see if we can not have the rather unsatisfactory situation that we've had next time we come round to members' questions. Okay, the next item of business is item number seven on the agenda, notice of motion regarding more cash in people's pockets at Christmas. There's a maximum time limit of twenty-five minutes for this item and may I call upon councillor Fran Belbin to move the motion? You may speak for up to three minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Colleagues, this week we've watched an increasingly desperate Tory party attempt to scapegoat all sorts of people, migrants, trans people, unions and benefits cla- benefit claimants amongst others for the dire state of our country. What we haven't seen is any attempt by them whatsoever to try and support those who are worst affected by the dire state of the economy. As we head into the winter, large numbers of families and people in Sheffield will be worrying about the cost of living crisis and how they are going to get through the winter with inflation still running high and the increasing costs just of the basics of buying food and keeping warm. The Tories have left the job of supporting these families and these, and these residents to local government and the voluntary and the community sector while also starving us of the resources we need to deliver. Nevertheless, this council has prioritised support for those who need it and we've worked arm in arm with our voluntary and community sector, our business community and other partners to address these issues. Working together in partnership between us, we've developed a network of around ninety welcome places across the city where people can keep warm and get a hot drink, where they can access advice and support within their communities. We've recruited community organiser and development workers who are helping people to get better access to food across the city and to support our welcome places to do more. We've put cash in people's pockets by providing food vouchers, uh, to families to make sure that their children aren't going without during the school holidays. And we've provided activities and healthy meals for children through the HAV programme all around the city. We've provided emergency support through the Household Support Fund grants as well for those who are reaching crisis point. Our winter plan will continue over this winter and we'll be offering more activities. Through our local area committees, at the moment, we are funding the expansion of Citizens' advised Sheffield services so that more people can access advice on maximising their income and managing debt. We hope we should be able to reach an extra five hundred people per month, uh, per, uh, through, through this support. We're working with our homelessness service to support those who are facing eviction from private rented accommodation and we're targeting information about the support we're offering to those groups that we know who are most at risk from hardship. Because we do know there are more people in need of support, just this week a primary school contacted councillor Dorn Dale as the chair of the Education, Children and Families Committee, worried that more children are going hungry as a result of the very low uh, income threshold that you need to access free school meals. Families on universal credit can earn only seven thousand four hundred pounds a year before they lose their, lose their eligibility for free school meals. And incidentally, they still have to, uh, if they're on low wages, they still have to be out looking for work or else Jeremy Hunt is going to sanction them again, according to the majority announced at Tor- at Tory Party Conference this week. We know that children depend on eating healthily to get through their school day and to get a good education. That's one of why Labour is proposing free breakfast clubs for all children if we are elected at the next election. So this motion asks the Strategy and Resources to committee to especially consider this cohort of families over the Christmas holidays and to cost up ways of targeting support towards them this winter to make sure that children in Sheffield don't go hungry and don't spend their Christmas feeling cold and miserable. Thank you.
I now call upon councillor Laura McLean to second the motion. You may speak for up to two minutes and this is councillor Kay's maiden speech.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Um, I'd like to begin my maiden speech by thanking the people of Walkley for electing me to represent them. Last Friday afternoon in Walkley, I was doing the last school pick-up of the week. I was walking with a group of mums. The conversation wasn't about plans for the weekend but about the price of the weekly shop and how it is going up and up. With rising prices and bills, there are few families who aren't feeling the pinch at the moment. However, we know that there are many in our city who are facing extreme hardship. This week, I was speaking to a Sheffield primary school teacher who lives in my rural This week I was speaking to a Sheffield primary school teacher who lives in my ward. She told me that more families are struggling this year. There has already been an increase in the number of families receiving support from their food and clothes hub. I know of a school in our ward whose breakfast club is full and has a waiting list. Across our city, parents are struggling to work without affordable childcare and many rely on school breakfast clubs to feed their children. I think of the grandparent in my ward who told me they are anxious when they boil their kettle because they can't afford the bills. They would like to take on more hours at work, but they can't because they provide childcare for their grandchildren to enable their parents to work. I also think of the residents I have spoken to in Walkley who are working multiple jobs but for whom work just does not pay. We know there are parents and carers across our city who skip meals to feed their children and for them, the prospect of the Christmas holidays does not fill them with joy but with panic at the thought of struggling to feed their loved ones for two weeks. Around thirty-seven percent of the children in our city are growing up in poverty. That's eleven children out of a class of thirty. Let's be clear that the struggles people are facing are the direct result of thirteen long years of Tory austerity. The people of Sheffield need to be able to feed their children, heat their homes and rely on wages to give them enough to live on. It is clear from the Conservative Party Conference coverage this week that the issues facing the people of Sheffield are just not on their agenda. We need a Labour government that cares about everyone and not just the few. I call on members to support this motion, which will mean that this Christmas we can alleviate the burden a little and put cash in the pockets of those that need it the most.
Thank you very much and congratulations on your maiden speech, which was inside the red light. So congratulations on that as well and let that be a lesson to the rest of you. I have two proposed amendments and these are numbers one and two on the list of amendments circulated at the meeting. May I call on councillor Ian Horner to move amendment number one? You may speak for up to two minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I think somebody's taken a leaf out of Rishi Sunak's book here because we heard earlier his recycling loads of schemes. Well, this motion does say, a lot of the money that's been talked about, we've already agreed that that's what we should do. Citizens Advice Bureau, we moved a motion on that. So what I want to talk to you today about is the fact that at this council, we've got some serious motions coming up about the financial situation of the council, whatever our different views, but what we've got here is a letter to Santa saying, wouldn't it be nice to do all these things, which by the way, we're already doing. But let me then turn to talk about a particular aspect that's happened in the last week, which is Labour's unwelcome Christmas present to bus passengers in South Yorkshire and in Sheffield in particular, the cuts to bus services. Labour Greater Manchester got ninety million out of the government for transport. Labour West Yorkshire got seventy million. South Yorkshire got nothing. And why we're facing bus cuts? Explain to me how it helps people looking for a job if they can't get a bus to get to the job? Explain to me what it does for pensioners living in isolation when they no longer have a bus service passes their house? These bus cuts are on top of cuts we've already had. In my own area, Crystal Peaks College closed because of the falling student numbers, because of the cancellation of bus services to Rotherham. Crystal Peaks Market traders tell me that their footfall has fallen since the removal of bus services to Rotherham. Bus services affect so many people. If we cannot get, people cannot get a bus to get to work, to get about, that affects their cost of living.
Thank you. I call upon councillor Simon Clement Jones to second the amendment.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor, and congratulations to councillor McLean for an excellent maiden speech. Also, fine words from councillor Belbin. What I'm not feeling is the urgency with this chamber, this sovereign body, and passed a notice of motion many months ago, saying that we ought to allocate six hundred thousand pounds towards the cost of living in the South, in the South Local Area Committee. We already took what's going on with the initial money that came from the budget amendment, which effectively forced us to choose between our local food banks and the Citizens Advice Bureau, between what our food banks and local VCF were telling us and what officers were recommending we do with our money, with the public's money. And it was a invidious choice because Strategy and Resources haven't even discussed what would happen with our suggestion from July twenty twenty-three. And we, you know, I don't see any urgency in finding out what we'd do with that. We know exactly what we'd do with it. Same, we've spoken with the VCF, with the food banks and, you know, we ended up, I think, with a very good thing, which I have to say, in the following notice of motion does highlight the work that we've done specifically in the South Local Area Committee, find out what's going on on the ground, find out what's the best solution, to do something about it and actually effectively penalise the CAB in terms of their offer because we'd kind of taken the idea and run with it. So, you know, I think it's a bit disingenuous, this, your notice of motion. I think we've amended it and I recommend it, our amendment, to the council. Thank you very much indeed, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. May I call upon councillor Alexis Diamond to move amendment number two? Again, you can speak for up to two minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and congratulations to councillor McLean on an excellent maiden speech. As previous speakers have said, this is a vital subject, but unfortunately, this is an ineffective motion because it contains almost no actions. Eliminating poverty and addressing the ongoing cost of living crisis should be a priority throughout the year, not just at Christmas time, as our amendment makes clear. As with all too many Labour motions at full council, this motion asks merely to note and state beliefs without any actions which will actually put money in people's pockets. Indeed, the only action is to ask the Strategy and Resources Committee to do things which they should be already doing in seeking to address the cost of living crisis. What is the point of this empty motion? It's a wasted opportunity, I'm afraid. No ideas presented, which is why our amendment draws attention to the initiative to be prioritised by the South Lac and championed by Green councillors for face-to-face income maximisation advisers in our community. While this motion shows that Labour have no ideas locally, nationally, the picture is even worse. Keir Starmer's new Conservative Party is committed to the two-child cap on child benefits, opposed to wealth taxes, opposed to land value taxes, opposed to any redistribution and opposed to policies which will actually alleviate the poverty and inequality which blights this country. In Scotland, Greens in government have shown what could be done, for example with the weekly twenty-five pound child payment on top of child benefit, which is lifting thousands out of poverty. If Labour members inside and outside this chamber want to address the cost of living crisis and the existential challenges facing our country, they must support redistributive policies, oppose austerity and fictional fiscal rules, reject Keir Starmer and join the Green Party, a party with radical policies for a better society.
Councillor Anjanoti. I've done it again, Arjentia, hey! With apologies again.
I'm here.
Are you there?
Hi, thank you, Lord Mayor. We should have a swear jar. Who says the wrong names, the wrong people? Congratulations, Laura, for your really good maiden speech and thank you, Lord Mayor. I will repeat quite a lot of what my excellent colleague councillor Diamond has already said. I think it's important that we acknowledge that tackling poverty is not something that we just do at Christmas. And although I appreciate that for some people, at that time of year, the pressures can be greater, we need to address poverty on a systematic way, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. My group strongly believes, as Alexis so eloquently said, the motions we bring to council should have specific suggestions that require the council to act, rather than passing the issue on to other committees, including S and R, who should already be doing what's been suggested. From my personal experience in my ward, just very recently, just very few, you know, it happens all the time, I just can give you an example of just last Friday, face-to-face services is what people need and the advice, you know, the pilot in the Gliedless Vale, and I'll take a leaf out of councillor Miskell and praise my great colleagues in Gliedless Vale, councillor Diamond, councillor Elliot and councillor Turpin. We are aware, we are valid, I have a one-point face-to-face advice to provide, benefit advice, promoting income maximisation and supporting appeals to refused benefit claims. This is a very effective way of getting people on low incomes to set what they are entitled to, but also have accessibility for people who do not speak English as a first language. As I said, on Friday, I was in my ward with an interpreter going house to house because that is often a problem for people as well. Thank you.
Thank you. We now move to the debate on the matter and speakers have got up to two minutes. The first name I've got is councillor Moynihan.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I would agree with councillor Diamond that poverty is an issue to be tackled all year and that is why we need to get rid of this government that's imposed austerity on some of the poorest peoples in our society. However, we must remember that it's a holiday period. It's not just about Christmas, it's about a holiday period where people have got to heat their homes probably more than usual, have got to feed their children. And contrary to a letter to Santa, which councillor Horner said, who, if I wasn't so polite and be tempted to call the Grinch, parents do have letters to Santas and that is a lot of pressure on people. Children's expectations are high, they feel that they should have what some of their wealthier classmates should have and that is a horrible feeling if you're a parent. So there is a lot of expectation. It's a time of year when people of all cultures come together, families celebrate with their neighbours and it's an awful, awful pressure. So I welcome you and ask you to vote for the substantive motion, but that doesn't mean we let this government off the rest of the year.
Councillor Mohammed.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and congratulations, Laura, on your maiden speech. This issue is really important. I think it's something that we raised at our last meeting, when I'm very grateful for council for supporting the proposals to actually give more money to lifestyle and the cost of living and actually put two hundred thousand pounds extra towards advice services that would actually give some support for those who can access benefits. But I'm scratching my head looking at this saying, so what is this going to do? Because we've already got money earmarked via S and R actually for the Household Support Fund. My understanding is that most of that money has already been allocated and the only bit that's left, about two hundred thousand, has been delegated to the director of communities. I was already looking at giving direct awards, so what is it that this Labour motion is going to do that is not going to already happen? It's a genuine question. I hope Labour colleagues from across there, or maybe councillor Belbin when she's responding at the end could actually tell us, what is extra going to happen that's not already in train? And I think the other issue that councillor Horner raised about as buses is really important, that South Yorkshire has lost out. And it's a genuine question, why did West Yorkshire and Greater Manchester get the funding and we as South Yorkshire didn't get it? It can't be blamed that they've got Conservative mayors because Andy Burnham is Labour and Tracy Brabham is Labour. So what is it that South Yorkshire is not doing is a question I posed to councillor Mayor Copard before. It's all right blaming the Tory government, but actually what is it you are not doing that means we are losing out? And it is an important question. I hope every one of us in this chamber are asking Oliver Copard. It's very easy for him to blame the government for everything. It's high time he started looking at himself and the mayor, the combined authority to say, what mistakes have we made in the past that has cost our region money, as councillor Horner has identified.
Councillor Johnson.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. First of all, congratulations to councillor McLean, a very nice first speech there, well delivered, despite the lack of content of what you've been given to work on. A thin motion really, a bit like a malnourished child, isn't it? What I did want to say is actually it's a very well-committed, which is about the food versus vouchers debate. So it's paragraph G that's in there and essentially, you know, what it says, is a cash-first approach is an effective, direct way to provide financial help that trusts people to make the best choices for them. And I'm glad to see that in there because at one point I was a member of the Food Poverty Working Group, set up under one of the committees I was on at the time. And actually that issue came up there and was quite fiercely debated with, I'm coming in fairly once here, was still on that group, some of the councillors have left now. But I think it is a move forward that we're now talking about, providing people with cash instead of this sort of very Victorian approach of giving vouchers. And the reasons for that is, first of all, it is about trust and empowering people. It's a bit of an old Tory thing, isn't it, to give people vouchers? Because if you give them money, they'll just spend it on boots and fags or something nice, you know. It's a bit patronising because you've got to know that people on very low incomes are often pretty good at managing their money because they have to be, they don't have that choice and they are good at it. But also, it's something about supporting the local economy because, of course, you only get vouchers for the big supermarkets, so it's quids in for, you know, the likes of Tesco and Zanesbury's. But actually, for lots of people, they want to spend the money in shops that they can actually get to without having to get a bus a long way when the voucher doesn't cover their bus fare. So this step towards that will be very welcome and of course, it'd be nice to see if we can actually do that because at the moment, we are still giving people vouchers and not cash. So that might be something that we can change in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councillor Ridley.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and congratulations to councillor McLean on an excellent maiden speech. Lord Mayor, over a decade ago, one of the most destructive periods of economic policy in British history, was imposed on the public by a Conservative government, aided and abetted by the Liberal Democrats in coalition, who were complicit in the targeting of the most marginalised groups in society. This deliberate and relentless targeting of the most vulnerable amongst us has meant that in Sheffield, inequalities have continued to deepen as working people pay the price of this government's catastrophic handling of the economy and the spiralling cost of living. As winter approaches, we are going to see the struggle further intensified. Cold weather brings increased fuel bills and other additional expense. Children will be at home on holiday from school for two weeks and many people will want to celebrate one of the many mid-winter festivals, including Christmas, which happen around this time. By seeking to put cash into people's pockets at Christmas time, Labour is putting forward a positive, practical and direct way to relieve hardship at a time when many people feel the additional financial pressures and which focuses on those children and families who need our help the most. I would urge members to support this motion. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and congratulations to Laura on her maiden speech, an excellent speech. Lord Mayor, it's ironic that Labour are touting their credentials on the cost of living when their leader and mayor are signing off massive reductions in bus frequency to sixteen routes in the evening and Sunday services in Sheffield. Of the sixteen routes, two are in my ward at West Ecclesfield. These two routes are all we have. Already, we have lost two routes, the sixty-six service and the one-three-five service. Already, we have lost two routes, the 66 service and the 135 service. The current 86 and number one service are unreliable. These two routes are the only routes servicing Granuside, Burncross and High Green, and also parts of East Ecclesfield and South Yards. Three weeks and the cuts will be made, an early Christmas present for some. Lord Mayor, it's been established through extensive study that a lack of access to public transport has a significant impact on poverty, a significant impact on poverty. West Yorkshire MCA recently performed, have received £70 million. Labour's failure by the two South Yorkshire mayors have had a direct impact on people's ability to travel. Two-pound fares are great, but we must have a regular, reliable service to attract the public to go back to using public transport. Please support our amendment. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. We've now reached the time limit for this debate, so I'm now going to refer back to councillor Belbin, who has the right to reply up to two minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I am a bit disappointed, I must say, to start off with, that councillor Johnson chooses to make jokes about malnourished children in this debate, and that's not the standard of debate that I expect in the chamber. As far as public transport goes, as I believe everybody here knows, the South Yorkshire mayor is working to try and take our public transport back under public control, so we can provide better buses, instead of the shambles that the Tory government has imposed upon us, and as they have done again, yet again today with the cancellation of HS2. Now, it's easy, of course, for some of the smaller parties to make promises about what they do in government when they know they will never have to deliver. So perhaps I should not be surprised that Liberal Democrats don't appear to know very clearly how budgets work, despite their next motion being all about congratulating themselves on fiscal responsibility. Just to go over the issue of the motion that they brought to the July council, and the balanced budget that we all agreed back in May of this year, we unanimously agreed £400,000 to be spent on addressing the cost of living. In July, the Lib Dems brought a motion proposing a further £200,000 should appear from nowhere to fund some Citizens Advice services. They had not discussed that with Citizens Advice Sheffield, they had not had a conversation with them about what support they needed, and they were trying to dictate to Citizens Advice how they should give that support. We have since had conversations with Citizens Advice and talked to them about what we can best do to support them. As a result of that, we are proposing that further funding is given to them from the £400,000 originally allocated. Now, with the Lib Dems, I've got practical ideas about how to better support people through the cost of living crisis, I urge them to bring properly costed ideas instead of just proposing extra amounts of money from nowhere.
Okay, I'm now going to move to the votes on the substantive. Move the vote on the First Amendment, which was moved by councillor Ian Horner, and unless we have unanimity on this, we'll use the electronic voting system. Is there any dissent?
Dissent.
There is dissent, therefore we'll move to electronic voting. Is there any voting in parts?
Yes, Lord Mayor, thank you. So in voting for, we're voting for, but against part two.
Can we start the system? Councillor Nilson, we've got 71 votes, and there are 71 people in the chamber. Oh, there's 72, oh, councillor Dams has arrived, yeah, so everybody, I understand there are 72 members present, we've got 72 votes, the voting is now, there is one person, hang on.
Sheer.
It's me. No, I've voted, no, I've voted. We have 72 people present, 71 votes cast, and I'm not sure who hasn't voted. Councillor Dams came in late. We now have 72 votes cast, so the voting is 33 for, 31 against, eight abstentions. Therefore, with a proviso about the voting in parts, which I'm not sure how it affects it, that amendment is carried. What it means that part two is lost, by the voting in parts, now we're going on to the amendment number two, which was moved by, well, it was the Green Amendment, wasn't it? So have we any dissent?
Absolutely. Just dissent.
Dissent? Any voting in parts? Can we have the voting in parts, please?
On the Green Amendment, we'd be voting against, but four, one.
Any other voting in parts? Okay, yes, councillor Hurst.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. In voting for, we'll be voting against three. Well, I'm speaking for my comrades.
Just to be clear, as you're not a group, can each of the other individuals stick their hands up to show that they agree with councillor Hurst? Thank you, we'll take that as right. Okay, can we commence the voting on amendment two? One person still to vote, is it the same problem with the council up there? Do the whips, just want to have a quick whip round and see if everybody's voted. Oh, well, as this is, right, it's clear now, okay, that amendment is carried, 39 for, 31 against, one abstention. And it also means, because of the voting in parts, part three is lost. There was parts, there was parts of the independent non-group and the Labour group. Just bear with us while we check which bits have got through and which bits haven't. Councillor Pipp seems satisfied with the office of ruling now, so we can move to the vote on the substantive motion. Again, we will conduct this electronically. Is there any voting in parts on the substantive motion?
Can I speak? So we are voting for, but abstaining on the, sorry, where have we got to? It's too small to read. For, but against any parts of the Lib Dem and Green amendments that have passed, except for Green one. Same as, it's written down.
Have the officers got that?
Yes.
Yeah, any other voting in parts? We seem to have lost four people. I'll just give a minute or two more, then. We're finding people again. Right, we're up to 71 now, should be 72, I think, but that motion is clearly carried, apart from the bits that are lost by voting in parts, which we will be advised of later. It's carried in full, carried in full. Okay, thank you, I'm now going to have a break now, and timings will be by this clock, and we'll have a 10-minute break, so back here at quarter past, and can the movers and seconders of the next motion be sure they're in place? Thank you. Please resume your seats, the webcast has started, we are now on live. Four minutes late, you're all in detention. We now move to item number eight, our notice of motion regarding financing Sheffield City Council after the next general election. There is a maximum of 25 minutes for this item. May I call upon councillor Bernard Little to move the motion? You may speak for up to three minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. May I congratulate my ward colleague, Laura Aggie, for a brilliant speech, thank you. If you've got your eyes open when you walk around Sheffield, you would not believe we're living in the sixth most wealthy country in the world. Let's remind ourselves, the value of assets held by the UK is a massive six trillion pounds, six trillion pounds. Yet, people who are living on the edge of existence have died, and will continue to die because of social inequality. More and more people are going to food banks because they can't make ends meet. As local councillors, following decades of underfunding, we do do our very best to provide decent services with our brilliant colleagues in the council. Yet we know that this is not good enough, that in order to pay for those services, we are juggling a meagre and shrinking budget, and in many cases, robbing Peter to pay more. Accepting that we have to deliver year-on-year savings lacks ambition and is defeatist. Setting national financial goals to meet the needs of the market, rather than wider society, is profoundly cynical, and shows that we have lost our way. This city is where it is because central government pleads poverty, yet they slavishly follow the dictates of a system and an orthodoxy that believes that there is no alternative. You remember no alternative, Tina Thatcher's legacy. Let's be absolutely clear, the way our country chooses to manage the financial system is a political choice, it's a choice, it's not black and white, there are other ways of doing things. Continuing to follow the failed ways of doing things that led to the 2008 global crash, for example, had the expected, and expect the outcome to be different, is simply madness. We want public services that are fit for purpose. We will strive so that everyone has a decent home. We want a publicly owned and integrated public transport system. We know we can tackle the most challenging crises that have ever faced humanity, climate change and the collapse of our life support system. This motion and its three local considerations provides some practical answers to troubling questions for, some of the most troubling questions for politicians, how are you going to pay for it? Accountant and political economist Richard Murphy, the author and origin of the Green New Deal, Sheffield University Management School, has produced the first 10 of what will be 30 proposals in need. will be thirty proposals in these Taxing Wealth Report. It will be completed this month. We should be proud of this document and use it in all our deliberations. Thank you.
Councillor Holmsho, second the motion.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. The current economic model in the UK and globally is based on maximizing material consumption for short-term profit maximization. In other words, we are really encouraged to buy and spend more to enrich multinational corporations, who now have almost limitless control over our economy and our daily lives. This destructive cycle cannot continue indefinitely. The system is ultimately going to destroy society and wreak climate chaos on the world. We, as a city council, are reduced to bidding for pots of money from central government to try and improve the city centre, or to upgrade our streets, our cycle pass, or we are being forced to sign to long-term contracts with multinational corporations, and these not even based in Sheffield or even in Britain. Alternatively, we could write some begging letters to central government, asking for more money, but this is not enough. As a council, we need to explore every opportunity, and we, as Greens, have given three here, and spend more money locally. We need a thriving local economy where the money stays in Sheffield if it's earned in Sheffield. This will ensure that the council can continue to support vital services necessary to support the people of Sheffield. I recommend councillors to adopt this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Holmsho. There are two proposed amendments, and these are numbers three and four on the list of amendments circulated for meeting. May I call upon councillor Tom Hunt to move amendment number three? And again, you can speak for up to two minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you very much for this motion. I'd just like to first congratulate councillor Maclean for an excellent maiden speech. Our motion is relatively straightforward. We have two world-class universities in this city, and there is fantastic research coming out of them every day. However, this report that is referred to in the motion, we haven't yet seen, so we can't comment on it. And so that's the thrust of the motion. But it is a useful opportunity for us to discuss local government finances, and there's a second motion hot on the heels of this one to talk all about the impact of thirteen years of austerity. But, Lord Mayor, when we talk about the financial challenges that Sheffield faces and revenue for this local authority, we cannot ignore the fact that for over a decade, economic growth has been stagnant. As a country, we're falling behind. Families and businesses have been held back by a lack of a long-term growth plan, leading to flatlining productivity. We need growth so that we can improve living standards and reduce poverty, as the motion mentions. And growth leads to the creation of more and better-paying jobs and provides the tax revenues that we need to be able to fund strong public services, to help fund councils like ours. The reverse is true, too. Strong public services that act as a springboard, not just a safety net, lead to a healthier workforce with the skills they need. Better-paid jobs mean that people can contribute more to their local economies. It's a virtuous circle, not the spiral of decline that we're locked into. So that's why we must be focused on getting growth going in this city. Thirty-six thousand new homes, twenty thousand in the city centre, exploiting the opportunities that new investment zone brings, a new transport strategy to make sure that we're better connected than we currently are, seeing climate change as an opportunity for jobs and new investment, not as a cost. That's how we'll bring new revenue into Sheffield.
Thank you. And can I now call upon councillor Sean de Beaux Richards to second the amendment?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. First of all, congratulations to Laura on your maiden speech and for doing it in the right amount of time as well. I can see why Colin enjoyed your speech so much. Yeah? I'm just going to speak up very briefly on this to say that the forthcoming report by Professor Richard Murphy, I don't doubt it will be an interesting one, but it's not one we've been able to read yet. So, being able to say, we're looking forward to it and we expect it to say these things, is fine, but what if it doesn't? Because none of us have seen it. So, asking us to vote agreement to something that isn't even published yet seems a bit strange, I will say that. When it is published, I'm sure bringing it back for debate will be an interesting thing to do. In the meantime, we do have to get on with supporting the people in our city. When you say people in the most deprived parts of South Yorkshire will live an average of nineteen years more in poor health, I think we also need to compare the fact that we know just in our own city, from one end of the eighty-three bus to the other side, gives you a thirteen years less life expectancy. I represent one of the poorest wards. I live in one of the poorest wards, but I don't actually want to have to keep saying that. It's not actually a badge of pride for me to say that. So, we need growth, we need skills and education for all of our young people, and we need to be thinking about that now. And instead of sending begging letters, as this motion suggests, perhaps we should just start looking at what we can do. I think you've got there E is a begging letter. Then, we should in fact be working for all of the people of our city to improve their life chances now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We now move on to amendment number four, and councillor Andrew Sanger can move this for up to two minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and many congratulations to councillor Laura Maclean on an excellent maiden speech. Lord Mayor, I think we're all interested in ensuring we have fair tax levels across society and that local government is properly funded. But I think the problem we all have, and we've just heard it from the last two speakers, is none of us have read this taxing wealth report yet by Professor Richard Murphy. It may be very good, it may be part of the answer, but it needs to be out there. We need to all have time to read it, it needs to be reviewed, it needs to have been absorbed by the community, and there are other books available. Clearly, we can't base all of the policies of the council on one book, one report that has yet to be published. The cost of living crisis has shown up the disparity between the profits of a number of large major organisations at a time when many households are struggling to put food on the table or to heat their homes. And so therefore, we have a clear on our side that it is time for a one-off windfall tax on the profits of BP and Shell, which have clearly been made on the back of global oil and gas prices in the wake of Putin's illegal invasion of Ukraine, should be implemented around today. It's not the only answer, but it's a quick win that the government could do tomorrow. When we're... Lord Mayor, when we're talking about the workplace parking levy, well, other than the Greens, nobody else is doing it. Across the country, it's only Nottingham that has it. When I go round the city, no business owners say to me they want a workplace parking levy. It's not the way to have a thriving business community. Business is part of what drives growth in this city. We need a thriving business-run city. A workplace parking levy will not do that. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. And can I now call upon councillor Masters to second the motion?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And firstly, thank you. Congratulations to councillor Maclean on her maiden speech. I have difficulties in understanding what the Green members are hoping to achieve with this motion. Crucially, it is asking us to support measures which are not yet open to scrutiny, and also to assume that any government post the next general election will be able to draw on a hypothetical tax-raising fund of eighty-three point three billion. It fails to point out that the part of the document in the public domain specifically states, it is not necessarily suggested that any government undertakes all these proposals simultaneously. And it also says that all the proposals have might raise appended to them. It is not clear how the measures in the report, written by Professor Murphy, closely associated with Green New Deal, will finance Sheffield City Council after the next general election, the name, the aim of the motion. It seems more a document to promote discussions rather than a way to provide the funding our public services need now. The motion also suggests Green members are renewing their attack on motorists and businesses. Their call for an employers' workplace parking levy and review on parking fees will place yet another financial burden on businesses still recovering from the effects of Covid and struggling with escalating energy costs and inflationary pressures. And given their efforts to make roads and workplaces and businesses inaccessible to buses in much of the city centre, it's questionable how this will help promote public transport. We all agree that councils need proper funding, but to ask us to support measures that at best can only provide some of this funding some years hence and penalize businesses that need support now is not the way. That is why I commend our amendments to this ill-fought-through motion. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Masters. We now move to the debate on the matter, and speakers have up to two minutes. And it's councillor Mark Jones first.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and congratulations to Laura for an amazing first speech. I look forward to many, many more. I welcome this motion from the Green Party in so much as it is a genuine recognition of the difficult position the council is in. Across our nation, we've been put into this position by the Tory government and their inconsistent bedfellows. We all know this, we've gone over this debate time and time again. What you attempt to do here is to come forward with some suggestions about how we can fund our essential services. I absolutely get that, and I fully recognize where you're coming from from that. I have deep sympathies with that. Okay? So, I also agree that we must look as wide as possible for all ideas and suggestions as we can. However, as others have said, until I've seen the report and we've had a chance to discuss it, I'm reticent about backing it, because I simply do not know what's going to be in there. So I'm going to be cautious on this one, and it's unusual for me to be cautious, I'm sure many will recognise that. But I do look forward to coming forward and seeing what that does. With regards to the workplace levy and others, I've spoken to you about this, Alexey. For me, and with the report that we're coming forward, let us have those discussions, let us include our citizens in this, let us have that with the city at a wide, to see whether they genuinely want it or not. We in the council are often accused of making decisions and then consulting, and then not particularly listen to what the consultation points come out with. That is where we constantly find ourselves in. And for me, if I was to agree to this wholeheartedly, I'd be prejudiced in myself to the outcome of those discussions. So for me, I do welcome this, I think there's some to support and much to think of going forward, for sure. With regards to part E, begging letter, maybe. I can't support E because it feels a bit undemocratic. We're not including your leaders, I'm sure that they would back this, Brad. And actually, I did think about saying, why are we not included in the Lib Dem leader? I couldn't remember his name, Edgar Duck, something nonsense like that. I genuinely couldn't remember it. So whether you think they're irrelevant in this conversation, I don't know, but thank you for the motion. Thank you, Jack.
Right. Next speaker I've got councillor Autumn.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and congratulations to councillor Maclean on an excellent maiden speech. I wasn't going to speak in this debate, but I was moved by the comments made by councillors Little and Holmsho in moving the motion, slightly tangential to the actual content of the motion. I think it reveals a deep philosophical error in the Green Party's thinking on this. But I think across the chamber, we all want strong public services, but it does seem to be unique to the Greens that they can want a strong public sector alongside a weak private sector. Look anywhere in the world where public services and the private sector is strong, it is alongside a strong private sector that's paying its taxes. And it's very hard to achieve that, it's impossible as far as we can see, to achieve one without the other. The Greens used to lecture us quite, you know, with some merit, on the misunderstanding between wealth and income, between stock and flow, between capital and income. And the example they gave was you're attracting natural resources from the earth as if that's income, as if that's going to last forever, and actually you're running down your assets. And it's a fair point, but I think they're making the same mistake here. They're saying, look, there's all this wealth here, you could tax it, and maybe we can, and maybe we should in some cases. But that's the solution to strong public services, when it isn't. Now, anywhere around the world you look, strong public services are supported by a strong private sector that we need to flourish, and we need to flourish in Sheffield. I think elsewhere in the chamber, we recognise this. You can make some differences with high taxes on individuals. Look, the Scandinavian economies, they have strong private sectors, and they tax individuals very highly. And so you could go to the voters and say, look, we want you individually to pay a lot more in tax. It's a very hard sell, and other parties tend not to do that, because, you know, it would not be successful. But to say, well, there's an easy answer, injustice, all this wealth that's out there somewhere. Well, maybe it is out there, but maybe, you know, maybe it's capital and not income, maybe it's stock and not flow. Maybe you should listen to your own rhetoric from a few decades ago and question whether that would actually work. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Diamond.
Thank you very much. I think, well, just to answer some of what Joe said, and also how disappointed I am that Labour is abandoning redistribution. You know, we've tried the neoliberal experiment for forty years, and what has it led to? Low growth, higher inequality, exponential increase in billionaires, rampant corporations that have no democratic accountability, and now we just want to repeat the same thing, have infinities in a place where we've got, you know, a climate emergency, and it's just completely unsustainable. You know, trickle-down economics has always been a lie, it's always been a lie, there's got no, it's never had any evidence to back it up. There is plenty of wealth in the UK, plenty of wealth offshore, in tax havens, and what we need is redistribution. I mean, what is the point of the Labour Party now? Lots of people like to pretend that a Labour Party will be radical in government. Well, it won't. Keir Starmer has abandoned every pledge that he made to become elected as leader. The best that Labour people can hope for is that their leader is a liar, which is not a very good thing to hope for, really. As for the workplace parking levy, I mean, judge a scheme on its successes. What is it worth? Ten million a year in revenue for Nottingham Council to invest in buses? I think it's really disingenuous for the Lib Dems to criticise how bad the bus service is, when they will do nothing to support buses. It's one billion investment that Nottingham attracted over ten years as a direct result of their workplace parking levy. And it's true that businesses opposed it at the time, but what we need is politicians that will serve leadership and say what they believe in, and that's public services, which benefit those who have the lowest incomes, that is an equaliser, not people that can already afford cars and SUVs. Anyway, that's all I'd just like to say.
Thank you very much. Councillor Beldon.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. It might be useful to point to some of the things that the Labour Party has said it will do for local government should we win the next election. Going back to the last debate, one of the big problems that we have here in local government is the beauty contest that the government sets us up. So instead of properly funding, for instance, public transport in South Yorkshire as well as West Yorkshire, we're set up against each other. One of the things that the Labour government has said, that those beauty contests will end. We know there is not lots of money floating around for Labour to put into local government straight away, but we have been promised that we will have longer funding formulas so that we can plan appropriately and over a long period. So there are some positive things that we can look forward to if we can get rid of this government. The other thing I wanted to refer to was a report that has been published and that was launched in Sheffield last week, which did focus on how we can grow economies in cities like Sheffield. The Urban Futures Commission launched their report that drew on research that had been done by all the core cities, and that really did start to look at what could be delivered if we had proper private and public investment in the economies of our cities, and how we as cities, as place-based institutions, can really use that to create thriving economies that will benefit all the citizens within Sheffield and the other core cities, that have benefits not only for people in those cities themselves, but for the surrounding regions and towns. So I will urge colleagues to read that report and to take some of the lessons of that report on board within this debate.
Thank you. Councillor Martin Smith.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Just a couple of...
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Just a couple of points. First of all, I thought councillor Jones's comments about the importance of real consultation were spot on and I support those. The other bit I just wanted to talk about briefly was the workplace parking levy. I've been very fortunate to do a fair amount of business in Nottingham. I haven't met a single business owner in Nottingham who thinks it's a good idea. It was originally introduced to fund one specific project and then it's continued. We have to be really, really careful about putting businesses off from investing in Sheffield. Recently, I went to a particular business who is looking to make a major increase in the number of people they employed in Sheffield. I asked them what their number one issue was in terms of attracting to people to work at that particular location. And their number one issue was the inability of people to use their own transport out of normal working hours to get to that particular site. And we're talking about hundreds of people. So this, and also framing it as it's an income generating scheme. It's seen by the business community as penalising them. And councillors, we need to be very, very careful of that because it will impact employment in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. We've now reached the time limit on this debate, so I'm going to give councillor Little up to two minutes to write a reply.
Thank you very much, councillors and Lord Mayor. The taxing wealth report is levied on the 1% of the super rich. We're not talking about a tax across the whole population. And that seems to be what's missing from people's understanding of this. I hope that will, that will improve. It has been, it is being published on the internet and in social media and it's being published as each proposal comes in line. At the moment, there are 10 reports that Richard Murphy has produced. There will be 30 and he estimates that when that 30 is produced, we will be able to, we would be able to get around £170 billion a year from the excess money that is held by the most wealthy people in this country. We should tax that group of people because they gain most from public services. The workplace parking levy works for people. It's been designed to work for people in Nottingham, not necessarily for businesses. Once we get people with money in their pocket able to get to their workplace, that will support the workplaces and that's what we want. I must remind you that there are many people in this city, 30, 40% of the people in my ward, that don't have access to a car. So this is what we're trying to do. We're trying to address the needs of the poorest and the most marginalised. Thank you. Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you for the super event. And thank you, Mark, for that interesting reaction. Thank you.
Okay, so now come to the end of the debate and we're going to move to the voting on the various amendments. The first amendment is number three that was moved by councillor Tom Hunt. Again, unless I have unanimity, we'll use the electronic voting system. Is there any dissent? I was slightly surprised that there was no dissent on that. Okay, we move to the electronic voting system. There are 65 councillors in the chamber and we've got to 60. Yeah, so that is clearly carried. I'm always willing to ignore your advice, councillor. Thank you. That amendment is carried. Right, we're now moving to which amendment, amendment number four, which was the one that's moved by councillor Sangha. Is there any dissent? So therefore we are moving to the electronic voting and we don't need to use the bell because it isn't a recorded vote. Again, I forgot to say, is there any voting in parts? Thank goodness it wasn't. Okay. Four people yet to vote. You can tell if you haven't voted because green, red and yellow buttons will still be illuminated. Two to go. One, one missing. Okay, last chance. All right, that amendment is carried. 24 votes for, nine against, 31 abstentions. We now move to the voting on the substantive motion. Is there any dissent? It'll be voting in parts. Okay, let's have the voting in parts then.
Thanks, Lord Mayor. And so in voting for this, we're voting against the Labour amended B. We're voting against the Lib Dem amendments apart from two D, which we're voting for as well. So for the whole thing, against the Labour amendment and the Lib Dem other than two D.
Okay, any other voting in parts? Yes.
We're voting for, sorry, we are voting, which bit are we voting on now? Sorry.
We're on the substantive now, as amended, as amended.
So we are voting for the substantive, but abstaining on the original B and D, although B is now defunct, I think. And we're abstaining on any parts of the Lib Dem amendment that have passed. And we're against the original C and E. It's all written down.
Thank you. I think the total Lib Dem amendment was passed anyway, so.
Point, Lord Mayor, the Liberal Democrats, point one is presumably made defunct by the Labour amendment anyway.
Lord Mayor, I would argue that the deletion is repeated.
One at a time.
It's just a technicality that there's no B left, that following our amendment being voted for, there's no paragraph B left, if you sort of means for point one of the Lib Dems. It's just a technicality.
Okay, councillor Orton agrees with that comment. So with those voting in parts noted, can we commence voting on the substantive motion? And we have 65 voted, 63 in favour, two abstentions. That means the motion is carried apart from the bits that aren't. Yeah, okay, it'll come out in the minutes. Thank you very much. Okay, we now, yes, we move on to item of business nine and looking at the clock, we'll have time for that and at least the start of the debate on the final notice of motion. So item of business nine, notice of motion regarding preventing another Birmingham. Time limit of 25 minutes for this item. And may I call upon councillor Mike Leavry to move the motion and speak for up to three minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and congratulations councillor McLean on your maiden speech. It was excellent. The Republic of Sheffield in May 2021 voted for a cabinet budget system to replace a strongly even cabinet book, which couldn't come in for 12 months. So we then had a cooperative executive of Labour and the Greens. Come the following March 2022, 19.8 million of reserves had to bail out that budget and they failed to set a budget for the following year without resorting to another £15 million worth of reserves. In other words, half of the available reserves to support budgets and budget implementation plans had gone. However, we are then into a committee system under all the parties involved and the budget was delivered with just £5 million overspend and no need to set any reserves into this year's budget. If this hadn't have happened, we would have run out of reserves if the same methods had been used in the previous year and half. So we need to continue to keep the pressure, the financial pressure on what we're doing and we need to keep effective financial measures in place so that in particular the budget implementation plans are deliverable. We can't continue to roll forward year after year plans to make savings that can't be delivered. And so one of our recommendations is that from 2526, no budget implementation plans are put in unless there's a robust supporting implementation plan for it to happen. We should note also, I've heard a lot talked about business. Our business rates are on a continuous decline. 50% of the business rates are retained by this council and as a result of that, we're seeing a reduction in the amount of money that comes in to be able to set our budgets with. So, for example, to not give free parking on the run-up to Christmas affects businesses. Medahall will be rubbing its hands. City centre businesses will be wringing their hands. And it really is time that we get an understanding of economics because that will affect our income from our business rate because businesses will go. So, Lord Mayor, many councils are on the brink, but hopefully we now have the financial disciplines in place to secure our finances in the meantime. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll call upon councillor Sheffield Mohammed to second the motion.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and I just want to follow on from what Mike said. The stark reality was that, if we remember Eugene Walker at the time, when the committee system came in, got all three leaders of the parties in Douglas, remember this, and told us what we were staring down, you know, Mike's right to point out 19 million overspend, 15 million to actually set a balanced budget. The thing he didn't mention was that by November 2, we were 20 million overspent and if we didn't take dramatic action, we would be in some deep trouble. And, you know, we've seen what's happened with other councils that don't get a grip. And we have to say in Sheffield that we need to keep a very vigilant approach to it and the business, the BIBs, as we call them. There's some departments in this council that sign up to BIBs before the budget and then seem to forget that they've got to actually deliver them and it's not acceptable. And I think, you know, it's not a duty just for us on this finance committee to kind of keep the pressure up. I think each and every one of us on whichever committee we're on, we've got to say, if you've signed up to deliver these savings, then they've got to be delivered. What we can't do is you can't keep going back and saying, oh, we can rely on the reserves because that reserve pool is dramatically reducing. And given some of the pressures, okay, we can hope for the government to give us a settlement in November, but that you're living in hope and just ask the people that are watching it just do exactly what the government may or may not deliver. So I think this is why we thought it was appropriate to bring this notice of motion before everyone to flag up the issues that the city council has faced. There are some real challenges going ahead to set the budget and we've got to ensure that we balance this year's budget as far as we can. And if there are any overspends, they've got to be kept to a minimum and we've got to ensure that the budget setting process, those BIBs, have got to be absolutely solid and we've got to eyeball those directly to say, you're coming forward with these savings, you will be held accountable to deliver those because we will, we should not accept excuses after the budget's been set. Thank you, Lord Mayor, for that time.
Thank you. And there are two proposed amendments, numbers five and six, on the amendment circulated. And can I call upon councillors Aheer and Nas to move amendment number five again, speak for up to two minutes?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. First of all, I'd like to congratulate councillor McLean for your excellent maiden speech. I came into politics, Lord Mayor, to change things and my determination to do that is stronger than ever. On this side of the chamber, we recognise the enormity of the challenges that face us in local government. But we must not forget that since 2010, Sheffield has been hammered by 13 years austerity as a result of the Lib Dem Tory coalition and successive Conservative governments. It's not us that broke promises to the students, it was you. Funding has been decimated by 29%. That's 856 per resident in real terms since 2010 compared to the national average. Lord Mayor, only now the other parties are really appreciating the impact government cuts have had on council services. For over a decade, Sheffield Labour councillors have been prioritising the most vulnerable and tackling inequalities and we have always delivered a balanced budget. Thank you to our dedicated finance officers for their efforts each year to mitigate the impact for Sheffielders. At a local level, my ward of Donald, I hear heartbreaking stories each day of the difficult decisions people are being made, decisions being made by families. The cuts in funding fall hardest on local people in the most deprived areas, increasing inequalities. I know this because in 2020, I sat at the Donald Food Bank, which very quickly became a clothes bank and then a hygiene bank. It is disgraceful to suggest that Sheffield is on the brink of disaster due to mismanagement, as we saw in Birmingham. Councilors should instead involve themselves in grown-up politics in the interest of Sheffield, especially when we are still picking up the mess that you created. We have been working together, cross-party, for long-term planning within the finance committee system to continue managing the council's finances sensibly. Lord Mayor, it is also alarming that the Ways and Streets scene committee chair recently brought forward and backed a completely unfunded spending poll with the very opposite of good financial management. I'm glad that Labour won the reckless game.
Councillor Mary Lee.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I was just looking at the Lib Dem motion. It says how government funding has been squeezed over recent years. Well, it's not recent years, it's 13 years. When you went into the coalition with the Tory government, you ushered in austerity. You ushered in it willingly, without reservation. You imposed it on Sheffield and this is where we are now. Not only that, you introduced a bedroom tax, you cut funding to the police, less policemen on the street, other blue light services, the health service. less policemen on the street, other blue light services, the health service, benefits and sanctions. You sanctioned people. All those things, that's the context that people in Sheffield are living with now. And then you've continued to squeeze budgets. So over those, over those years, we had to cut slash budgets, year on, year on, year, over that period of time. Just looking, I was involved in social services and social care, so just looking at what we had to do in that, and we took our fair share of the cuts, but we had to change services, we had to reorganise services. While we were striving to keep people independent, safe and well, and we managed that, and year on year, we managed a balanced budget. And just as we were coming to the stage where we thought we could take a breather, along came Covid. And that was the context. Difficulties for people out there are reduced baseline budget reduced. And we had to then look at how we were going to manage Covid, and the grants from government were not enough. We had many, many, we had to, many, many increased funding, finance to find for the services across the piece. And one of the things that happened in social care, we wanted to keep people out of care homes, we wanted to keep them out of hospitals, so we had to impose, we had to introduce really high packages of care for some people with very complex needs, from learning disabilities to people, older people. And that's what shot up the costs. Up until then, as I said, we had balanced budgets. From then on, the budgets were growing steadily. The government did not give us any extra funding, and that is the position we are in today, and we've always striven to form a balanced budget.
Amendment number six is moved by councillor Douglas Johnson.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I think it's important not to go do too much scaremongering. First of all, as councillor Nas acknowledged, and as everyone knows, you know, council budgets are very much under pressure, have been hammered for many, many years. That's not unique to Sheffield. It's the same pressures that are experienced by many of those councils that have been issuing section one hundred and fourteen notices. We're not in that territory in Sheffield, and I think it's something that we ought to reflect on and be a little bit proud of in our more sober moments when we're not hurling insults across the chamber. The fact is that over the last couple of years, we've seen this council address budgets. And it is significant that we do have a council that's in a overall control and with a committee system, and everyone in this room has a role in debating and actually making decisions on actual budgets. And all our fingerprints are over all the budget implementation plans. And that's why I say, it's, you know, it's not time for point scoring. It is something that recognises that when we knock about ideas, we actually focus on bringing this budget together. And it's also why in amendment, we're recognising it is a team effort, it's not just the councillors. We are now seeing some really sterling work being brought in by our staff. There are a lot of staff involved in this council who are really working to make our budgets fit as best they possibly can. And don't emphasise how difficult a job that is. So that's why in our amendment, we recognise that facts are due to those staff as well as patting ourselves on the back. And then finally, we do have to be careful about banding about these figures. So in paragraph F, there are a number of figures in the original motion which are simply not true. And there is a danger of just over-exaggerating the panic that this council's in. The red lights come on, so I'll say no more on that, but I'll ask you to vote for the amendment. Thank you.
May I call upon councillor Angela Argenzio to second the motion?
Thank you. Thank you, Lord Mayor. I will not repeat things that councillor Johnson has just said. But from my experience on the Adult Health and Social Care Policy Committee as the co-chair last year and the chair this year, it is a council in no overall control, and it is a committee system. And that has generated a move towards a consensus culture. I know it doesn't happen on all committees, and it's not always plain sailing. But that consensus culture has enabled us to achieve a relatively smooth budget last year with the huge support from our staff and by working together. No overall control in the committee system means that political groups have to cooperate with each other to enable to deliver and to enable to deliver under this governance system. It is important that we keep the no overall control, and so that we don't revert to the arrogance and the we-know-best of that local government has had for many years, including this council. The Liberal Democrats are involved, involvement is important, and it means that they are inside the tent, not outside it. They are not the opposition, they are part of the administration. And we need to just be grown up and accept that. So I recommend our amendment to the chambers. I'm so mad.
Thank you. Now, we move to the debate. Speakers have up to two minutes, and councillor Reese first.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And I'd like to first congratulate Laura on her brilliant maiden speech, and also for the council officers working day in, day out, to make sure that our finances are watertight. It's fascinating, two finance motions in one for council. Buses often come together, but for us in the northern city, they sometimes don't come at all. I don't want to speak on the numbers, because I feel like there are people who are better qualified than me to speak on it. But on the impact that the section one one four notice that Birmingham's had to put in has on the people who live in Birmingham itself. Birmingham, like Sheffield, has got a brilliant cultural scene. But the council there is being forced to sell off in a fire sale many of their cultural institutions, their central library, their museums and art galleries, even their council house. Now, I'd like each and every one of the people in this, in this chamber to think about what makes this city great and what we'd have to sell off if we get to where we are. They have to think about, we have to think about the non-statutory spending, which will be forced out of our control if we go down this route. Now, every day, I get emails from people asking for Ward Park grants. I get emails from people asking for crossings in their areas. These aren't things that we have to do as a council, but we like to do, because we want to provide a city for the people to live in that they enjoy living in. So this, this can be about the numbers, but it's about the people who live in this city and how they see this city and what we do for them. It's not about the numbers in the spreadsheet, but how they think of us and how we deal with their finances. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is councillor Menesh Barak.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and congratulations to Laura for her fantastic maiden speech. Lord Mayor, it's really welcome that Sheffield Liberal Democrats have woken up to the precarious stakes of local government finances. I'm sure all of us in this chamber will agree that far too many councils across the country are struggling, whether that's Birmingham, conservatively controlled Furrick, or Wokingham, the Lib Dems. But this isn't a new phenomenon, and it hasn't appeared overnight from nowhere. In twenty ten, the coalition devastated local government. David Cameron and Nick Clegg took an axe to our essential services. Their benefits and care cuts led us to be world leaders. We became the first country to be investigated by the UN for violating disabled people's human rights. We know that the RAC scandal affecting schools across the country was a consequence of political choices. For its building schools to the heat-up programme, the last Labour government was set to replace every single secondary school in the country. That project was scrapped in one of the first acts of the coalition government. As a result of that coalition, eight hundred public libraries were forced to close and sixty four museums. In the seven years that followed, the twenty twelve Welfare Reform Act, the number of children obtaining food from Trussell Trust food banks more than tripled. A BMJ study linked austerity to a hundred and twenty thousand extra deaths, at least. They may say this is ancient history, but those cuts will continue to scar. And the government has maintained that same savagery for the past thirteen years. Since twenty ten, Sheffield has seen its funding cut by twenty nine percent, a cut far deeper than the national average. And it is in spite of that that councillors in this chamber have managed to set a balanced budget each and every year. And that is no mean feat. But we need the government to step up and provide fairer funding for local authorities. And frankly, we know that that won't happen with this government, which is today scratched pages too, which has sabotaged Northern Powerhouse Rail, which has no plans to properly invest in the North. Council, there is only one solution to decades of austerity: a Labour government.
Thank you, councillor Little.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm very much enjoying this debate. And as my friend here said, I thought that your contribution was great. We cannot continue to mine the very basis of wealth in this city. That basis of wealth in our city is our health, our environment, and our wellbeing. It's been eroded year after year, and it's been going on throughout my lifetime. And certainly since we heard the warnings from a report called The Limits to Growth, which was fifty years ago, and we were shouting about it then, and now the shouting is getting louder and louder. The result has been, of course, we've now got a world in chaos and edging on the point of catastrophe. We've got to address this, and we've got to look ahead. And I think this council has got the skills within it to address that, if it will face reality. Growth, more growth, growth is not the answer. It can only continue to fuel the problems that face us. It's madness. Hence, we brought the report earlier in this session today about taxing the wealth of the two percent. I believe that that is the, that is the way to go. We need to be using our tax system properly so as to encourage us to look after our real wealth, which as I said at the beginning of my speech, is our health, the environment, and our wellbeing. Get that right, and we've got a future. Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and well done to Laura for an excellent maiden speech. Lord Mayor, I find it astounding that this motion hinges its argument on this council's financial decision-making from just two years ago without setting out any relevant context of the decade of austerity that went before, leading councils to making the kinds of decisions they should never have to make. It's a point of fact that negotiations informing a coalition government in twenty ten failed to safeguard benefits and failed to prioritise fair funding to local authorities. It's a point of fact that informing that coalition, the Liberal Democrats signed up to the Tories' deficit reduction targets and therefore to supporting welfare reforms and cutting local authority funding. In supporting austerity, the Liberal Democrats enabled the benefits cap on working age people. They enabled the transfer of council tax benefits to local councils, along with a twenty percent cut funding. They enabled the shift to personal dependence payments, which resulted in countless delayed payments and left disabled people unable to afford food and heating. Welfare reforms, by the way, have also had a deep impact on the workloads and emotional stresses borne by carers, both paid and unpaid. The net result of those fateful decisions in two thousand and ten is that demand for public services has inevitably grown, while council finances have shrunk. Fact. So I'm asking, how is it possible to correctly assess the tough decisions the council finance teams have had to make in recent years, without considering that our present struggles were kick-started in twenty ten? Unless, of course, you're just trying to score a cheap political point and stick it on an election leaflet. The party that metaphorically did a deal with the devil by trading that horrific package of welfare forms for a five P tax on plastic bags ought to examine its own track record first and take some responsibility. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. We're now reaching the time limit on this, and so councillor Leavry has the right to reply. Councillor Little, can you turn your light off, please?
Thanks, Lord Mayor. A few comments. Delivering a balanced budget, you did not deliver a balanced budget in two thousand and twenty two. You used reserves to make sure that the budget balanced. That is not delivering a balanced budget. Secondly, I agree, we've worked well together, because we have a committee system and no overall control. The final year, a strong leader and cabinet delivered overspends and inability to set a balanced budget. Unfunded financial proposals. Well, are we saying that we're not going to accept any motions that put forward unfunded balanced proposals in future? Yes. So what about the motion that you put forward today, the very first one? Striking resources, a three one point one million spent on housing benefit alone. So let's get real, we're going to bring forward proposals. The one that affects local businesses has been a detrimental decision in what will happen in the run up to Christmas. And really, is the Labour government going to come in and bail us out? No. There's no record or any indication that is going to happen. So we will continue to have to continuously keep a hold on our finances, keep it tight. And what's more, let's not pretend, when it comes to business budget implementation plans, that we can just kick it down the road for another year and deal with it next year. We, reserves can only be spent once, and they're dwindling fast. Thank you, Rob.
Okay, thank you. And now we're going to move to the votes on the amendment and then the substantive. So the first vote is on amendment number five, moved by councillor Zahir at Nas. Is there any dissent? Okay, there, unsurprisingly. And can we have an indication of any voting in parts? Councillor Phipps, then councillor Orton?
Thanks, Lord Mayor. So in voting for this, we're voting against section three, and we are voting against the deletion of paragraph C in section two. So that would just be an addition instead of a deletion and addition.
Councillor Orton?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. In voting against, we're voting for one, sub clause three.
Okay, can we then commence the electronic vote? I'd hurry up, we're voting on your amendment. Okay, so that motion is carried, but part three is lost, and there's a change to two. And the rest is carried. Okay, we're now going to move on to amendment number six, which was the one moved by councillor John. Is there any dissent? Right, electronic voting, but is there any voting in parts? Councillor Milson?
With the Green amendment, we're voting for, but against three and four, and abstaining on six.
Got that. Councillor Orton?
Thank you. Voting against, we are for one. Voting against, we are for one.
Okay, right. Commence voting electronically, please. Right, that was very swiftly done. That is carried, but it's carried in parts. Parts one, two and five are carried. Parts three, four and six are lost. And if you're following that, we will now move to the voting on the substantive motion. And will there be any voting in parts on this? Councillor Milson.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. We are voting against the substantive but for A, B, G and H, for all parts of the Labour amendment that have passed and for any of the Green amendment points one, two or five that have passed.
Councillor Orton.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. In voting for, we'll be voting against any text that we've already voted against at the member's station.
And councillor Pips?
Yeah, I'll have one of them too. So in voting for, we'll vote the same way as in our amendments.
Okay. And commence the electronic vote, please. I think there should be one more person to vote. There should be sixty. Oh, that's it now. So that means 33 in favour of the substantive, 30 against two abstentions, so that it is carried apart from the bits that aren't. Okay, looking at the time of the final notice of motion and then we'll bring down the guillotine after that. Okay? So notice of motion regarding protecting Sheffield from dangerous dogs. So I'm going to call upon councillor Tom Hunt to speak for up to three minutes, slightly less if you're going to make it inside this guillotine for your sake.
That's fine. Thank you, Lord Mayor. Powerful aggressive dogs are causing serious harm and causing fear in our communities. People want action to make our streets safer and to protect lives. We've seen some horrifying dog attacks in recent weeks. A man tragically lost his life in the North East today. And here in Sheffield, we've seen incredibly distressing attacks on people. Let's be clear, Lord Mayor. The overwhelming majority of dog owners do the right thing. They train their dogs and they look after them well. But we have a problem with XL bullies. The government has said they will ban XL bullies. We say get on with it. We say listen to South Yorkshire Police. Assistant Chief Constable Dan Thorpe recently said, "Without action, we fear it is only a matter of time until we experience another fatality within South Yorkshire." That is why we say action must be taken. Our children, our key workers, our council staff, our families must be safe. XL bullied dogs account for 25% of all of the dogs that the police sees in South Yorkshire. Just last week, a judge in Sheffield ordered two XL bullies to be destroyed after an awful attack on a member of the public in Firth Park in March. The police are continuing to see an increase in seizures, fatalities and an increase in the times when they're having to put dogs down at incidents to protect public safety. Breeding XL bullies can be linked to, is often linked to serious unorganised crime, bred by puppy farmers and illegal breeders. Dogs are sold to fund criminality. Dogs are used as a status symbol. The welfare of dogs comes last. Banning the breed will help to break this cycle. This needs to happen fast so that no more members of our communities are put at risk or come to harm's way.
Thank you. And final speaker is going to be Mike Joplin to second the motion.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, for letting me bring up the rearguard. I'll begin by congratulating Laura McLean for her eloquent maiden speech today. I don't think mine's going to come anywhere near as good as hers. But I will begin on this matter by welcoming the amendments from both the Liberal Democrats and the Greens. They are constructive amendments and we're happy to accept the Lib Dem amendments in their entirety. Most dog owners, we know, are responsible. They look after their dogs, they keep them on leads. And these days, we see lots of them picking up the mess that their dogs leave and taking that away and putting that in bins. Sadly, there's a minority of dog owners that do not behave responsibly. The situation has been made worse since Covid, when lots of families, realising that they had a lot of free time, wanted to own a pet. That was three years ago. Nowadays, those dogs are mature dogs and there are a lot of owners who've not put their pets through the proper training. And they're frankly a risk to their own families as well as to the public at large. I'm a member of the Communication Workers Union. My trade union became so concerned about the rise in dog attacks on postal workers that in 2012, they began monitoring the situation for their workers across the country. And I'm very sad to say that in each of those years, right up to 2022, which is the year for which we have the most recent records, the S postcode area comes in the top three every year for injuries against postal workers. So I hope you will support this motion. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Now, the two amendments, we're going to do this formally. Amendment number seven, can I call upon councillor Orton?
Formally moved, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Alston.
Formally seconded, Lord Mayor.
And the next amendment, I think it's councillor Johnson going to move it?
Formally, Lord Mayor.
And councillor Pips?
Formally seconded.
Okay, so we're now moving to the voting on the first amendment. Is there any dissent? No. Therefore, that is carried in its entirety. We now move on to the second amendment. Is there any dissent on that? Councillor Orton?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. In voting for, we're against three.
Exactly the same, Lord Mayor. Voting for but against three.
Okay, is there any other? We'll then for, or you'll be voting for. Can we just vote for that and note that three will be lost? No, we can't. So therefore, we vote electronically. Okay. I thought it was me, but clearly not. Yeah. We have, oh, it's up to 60. Have some people gone to sleep? 62 now. 63. I think it should be 64. It's me. I've definitely, I voted. Okay, that is carried apart from part three, which is lost. We now move on to the substantive motion as amended. Is there any dissent on that?
We're in voting for the substantive motion as amended, we are still against the Green amendment parts that have passed.
It's lost, it's lost.
Is it lost? No dissent.
There is no dissent. So Paul, I'm going to say I can count that as just being carried. Thank you, that is carried. Item 11 on the business administered at the previous meeting, formally moved by councillor Richards.
Formally, Lord Mayor.
Formally seconded.
Formally seconded, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Is that motion agreed? Agreed. Thank you. We have covered earlier in the meeting item 12, so that concludes the business of this meeting. Thank you very much and a safe journey home. Just a very polite reminder, there is a bucket near the door on the way out. Okay? Thank you very much.